Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November fourteenth meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board. If we could come to order and please join me in a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, under God, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, just get my agenda open here. All right, Cam, could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled five thirty PM start time. Uh, this planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on November ninth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right. Thanks, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman. Okay, so I see. Uh, I'll start with Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
All right. Um, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, we have seven commissioners present, and um, we are expecting Commissioners Stomato as well, but for the time being, we have Quorum, we have seven commissioners.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, could we swear on the staff, please? Mike?
I see Cameron, Liz, Matt, Matt Junru, and Francisco. Do you guys swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, do we have any correspondence, Cam?
Yes, we do. So, um, quite a few things, actually. Um, I'm gonna start with just by reiterating for the public that um, under item six on the agenda, adjournments, um, just again, to repeat, uh, address one fifty-two Ogden Avenue. It's a preliminary and final major site plan. They will not be heard tonight. They, this is getting carried with preservation of notice to the November twenty-eighth meeting. Um, it's listed there under the adjournments, but I just wanted to make another announcement because um, I know there's quite a few members of the public that are here for that case, so that is not being heard tonight. That is going November twenty-eighth with preservation of notice. Um, and also, under adjournments, um, we have letter C. This is address one-ten Town Square Place. It was for preliminary major site plan with variances. This is actually not being carried. This is actually, uh, withdrawn. Um, so they are withdrawing their application. They will resubmit to the planning department when they're ready, if they're ever ready. Um, so uh, that covers adjournments. Um, then we are going to move all the way into new business. Um, item sixteen on the agenda, that's case P twenty-three dash zero seven-five. Uh, address three nineteen to three twenty-one, Fourth Street. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to November twenty-eighth. Um, and then item eighteen on the agenda, case P twenty-two dash two hundred twenty-seven. Address is six oh five to six oh seven Grove Street. They're requesting to carry with preservation of notice to November twenty-eighth. Um, and then item twenty-one on the agenda, case P twenty-three dash zero eight-five. It's a preliminary final major site plan with C variances. Address is five forty-nine to five fifty-one Pavonia Avenue. They're requesting to carry with preservation of notice to November twenty-eighth. Um, and then right after that, we have twenty-two on the agenda. Uh, case P two zero two-three dash zero zero four zero. It's a site plan amendment for three nineteen Fifth Street, and they are requesting to carry with preservation of notice to November twenty-eighth. Um, and then the very last item on the agenda, uh, that is item twenty-seven. That is case number P two zero two-three dash zero zero two-three. It's for a preliminary and final major site plan, address thirty uh, and forty Newport Parkway. They've requested to carry um, to the December twelfth meeting, and they will actually be re-noticing. Um, so yeah, they will notice again. And that's it. That, that's everything.
Well, Cam, case number twenty-seven is actually adjourned, and there will be a re-notice. We'll see if that happens for the December twelfth meeting or not. Uh, Cam, what is going on with this P twenty-three dash zero seven-five?
Uh.
Is this the case that's been kicking around?
It's three meetings now. They've carried, yeah, three meetings now, and it's because the engineering letter that came in two days prior to their hearing date said that they need to get rid of one parking space. So now, they're playing, um, they're working with their client to, to get rid of that parking space. Um, they're, they're not happy about it, so. Yeah.
So, Mr. Higgins is gonna have to formally waive any time for the board to act on this.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I believe he's raising his hand. I can bring him up.
Yeah, let's get him up on the screen.
Okay, here we go.
What item number is that?
It's item sixteen, Commissioner Torres.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Stephen Joseph, uh, not Michael Higgins here for the, for the applicant. We, we do apologize for carrying this item uh, so many times. As Cameron said, we did receive an engineer, engineering letter pretty late. Um, and did not have enough time to make the revisions requested um, in, in the ten-day window prior to this meeting. We thought we were gonna be able to get it done in time, but we didn't, so we will be ready for the next meeting. We just, you know, we didn't wanna present anything as an exhibit or, or anything like that. And we, we do formally, we do, uh, of course waive the board's time to act on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. And Mr. Joseph, just so that I understand, it is the intention of the applicant to make some revisions to the plans and submit those to the board prior to the eleven twenty-eight hearing?
Correct. The engineering letter requested some changes where we've made most of those changes. We intend to comply with that letter. Uh, we just felt that the, the changes the engineer recommended on the parking was a little too much to just agree as a condition.
All right, I just wanna make sure, obviously, the board has enough time to take a look at those plans in light of the fact that we have the Thanksgiving holiday right before that meeting, so.
Understood.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Um, okay, so let's move on to old business. Item eight is case P two-two dash two-one-zero. Is a preliminary and final site plan with C variances for twenty-seven to twenty-nine Fayette Ave.
Promoting Thomas Lean.
And Cam, just for the record, um, this was originally heard on September nineteenth, uh, present at that meeting where Vice Chair Gonzalez, Commissioner Torres, Commissioner Gangadin, uh, Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Lipsky, Commissioner Stomato, Commissioner Desai. Uh, I did state it at our last meeting when uh, this came up and we carried. Uh, I did watch the video. Uh, I feel comfortable voting on this application tonight. Um, who else do we have? Uh, Commissioner Green, have you had a chance to review the record on this application?
Unfortunately, I had a matter and I couldn't, I couldn't review it. I'm, I apologize.
Not a problem, not a problem. Um, okay, so you wouldn't be eligible to vote on this application tonight. Uh, so.
No, I won't.
Take, I would love to say take five. I think it's gonna be longer than five, but uh, that's fine. All right, we'll see in a few, darling. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lean, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, for the record, Tom Lean of Connell Foley, as was previously stated, uh, we did notice for the September nineteenth, uh, hearing where testimony was taken from our experts. Uh, it was carried to the October tenth meeting. I don't believe there was any expert testimony taken, but there was a discussion between myself and the uh, board members. Um, and uh, the, the issue was essentially um, uh, the JCMUA letter that um, we had received, unfortunately, just the day of the tenth. Uh, we have received a new letter that was posted and provided to the board dated October thirtieth. Uh, it seems we've already cleared up the issue about who should be voting on this application, so I think the only remaining issue is um, for counsel, just to confirm that jurisdiction is still proper before the board based on notice.
Thank you, Mr. Lean. Uh, the board accepts your recitation of the facts. I agree that there was testimony taken in September, and that the October meeting was discussion between yourself, the board, uh, and no expert testimony was offered at that time. Mr. Lean, I think the best way to proceed in light of the issue that was open and laid out is perhaps to address that issue head-on. I don't know how much additional testimony uh, the board needs to hear. I'll defer to the board in the chair as to if they feel they need additional expert testimony, but my understanding of the open issue was the connection. Uh, and Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, as to the connection we're talking about, but it was the connection with respect to sewer and water at the subject site. Uh, and how that was going to be facilitated, and what the JCMUA's position with respect to that was. They had put out a letter that the board found confusing, uh, or conflicting, if you will. So, that's my recollection based on my notes, Chairman. Uh, but I will defer, obviously, to, to yourself and the rest.
No, that's, that's what I have too, counsel. Um, yeah, we really just wanted a, a letter from the MUA stating their position. Um, and, you know, various scenarios that could work out. Um, so I, I'm satisfied with that letter. Uh, if there's any questions from anybody on the board, if they wanna address that.
Uh, just Commissioner Torres, um, but besides the letter that we were requested because using the MUA, there was no clear, uh, it wasn't clear to us, or to me, it's myself. The way they are distributing the waste from the building and taking it out of the building with um, with the pumping station and stuff like that, uh, I don't think the uh, or the person that was uh, was uh, they speak at to uh, uh, was, they were trying to do the pump. And uh, the waste out of the building and the stormwater out of the building.
Um.
We, we got, I, I got more confused on the cat spaces and how the type group was gonna be.
Okay, I think there's, there's a previous MUA uh, communication on here somewhere. Uh, I did see that they did address that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, you know, by all means, we can hear testimony on it.
Um, Chairman Langston, um, this is not me in the way of testifying. This is me in the way of trying to provide a, a little bit of clarity here. Um, I did provide to uh, planning and uh, counsel for the board today a previous approval that was um, granted by this board for the properties uh, directly to the east of us, namely those at the corner of Wales and Fayette. Um, what I had proffered to the board uh, at the last meet, the last time I was before the board was, it was indeed the intent uh, of not only um, this board, but um, the prior approval that the portions of uh, Fayette Street that are currently in private property where those lines run through were to be dedicated to the city. Um, why that dedication never happened, I can't speak to that, uh, but the fact of the matter was, uh, or is that uh, there was an approved design not only for those properties, uh, but for my client's property for those connections uh, to be run from Wales to my client's property. Um, we have a JCMUA letter that um, approved that design. Uh, this board approved and uh, the, the developments that are currently on Wales and Fayette with the idea that the street was gonna be given back to the city. Unfortunately, that never happened, so my client is left holding the bag a little bit here in that that connection uh, while approved, still runs through private property. Um, what the letter before the board says is, the JCMUA will accept one of three options, essentially. Either we will get easements from our neighbors uh, and that will allow us to utilize those lines, or the city will accept dedication of the property as was originally contemplated uh, as a condition of approval for those properties. Failing either of those options, the JCMUA has agreed that my client is allowed to run lines from their property underneath Fayette to Wales, and that the plans as provided, along with the calculations, are acceptable in any three of the scenarios that play out. So essentially, what you have is a conditional approval from the JCMUA saying, however the chips may fall, whether it be my client gets easements, whether the city essentially, uh, eventually uh, accepts the portions of Fayette that were always meant to be part of the public right of way, or if he is unable to do that in a timely manner, or just wants to proceed uh, with construction as soon as he can, he can run lines under Fayette to connect to Wales, and all those are acceptable to the JCMUA.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Yeah, I'm I, I'm fine with, you know, any of those scenarios. Uh, that's the JCMUA's wheelhouse. Um, so, yeah, I'm fine with that. That conclusion from them. Uh, Cam, I do see uh, Councilman Bogianos' hand is up. Do we wanna promote the counsel?
Chairman, I think before we start opening it up to public, I don't know, Commissioner Torres, does that answer your question? Or is your question still open?
No, uh, my question is still open because it's um, I understand clearly what the MUA is saying and the removal of the waste from the building into a sewer system and the three um, scenarios that they gave. Um, going back to previous meetings, I just um, wanna, I, I don't see any upgraded request or any backup on the architectural drawings that shows the pumping stations that they're pumping the stuff out with. They only show one pump for the sanitary, one pump for the storm, and they're still doing the same thing, and I'd like to know if there is any backup electrical, like I asked at the first meeting that we had. Um, right now, uh, it's, it's not, I, I did take a walk on that property. Um, I am okay with this letter from the MUA. It can happen. It's not a difficult to do either scenario. But um, what I am not comfortable with as a member of the Jersey City Planning Board is that we have twenty units and no backup electrical where what's gonna pump the waste and the sanitary if anything ever happens in a hundred-year storm. Basically, if there is a power shortage for more than one day, what are those twenty families gonna do? And uh, same as, um, what if one of the pumps go bad? Right? If a pump goes bad, how do we switch it over to having the waste and uh, of the families that are in that building leave the building, or the, no, I, it's just too many units not to have a backup plan. Uh, that concerns me. So I was wondering if that, I, I didn't notice in this um, what was sent to us in this application now, I don't see any changes on that, and I'm wondering why.
So Commissioner, is it satisfactory to you that as a condition of the approval, a backup generator for the pump be made a condition?
Would be add a backup pump. I would, if you would need. What if we, we're not saying that you could get a pump installed and fix it one day?
Commissioner, I.
Yeah, yes. If it takes more than one day, you would have to stop everybody in that building from using the facilities. And it's twenty families. Uh, so it's a, it's a larger amount, and what they have there now, what they have there now is a pump outside. You can see it outside the front sidewalk of the building. And what they have is uh, four families. Okay, so I could, you could, you could maneuver four families a little easier. Much difficult to maneuver twenty families in a storm or a blackout that happened more than two or three days long. Basically. Oh, I, I, I like the idea of pumping, draining, issue. The uh, the third option that they're giving in scenario, well, she, it looked good to me. It looks, it looks feasible. But I don't find.
So Commissioner, we're, we're gonna impose that condition on Mr. Lean right now. That's what's about to happen. The question is, what is that condition? That it's a backup pump equal to the pump proposed with a generator?
Yes, with a generator system that's needed, especially on the sanitary um, component of the building.
Sounds reasonable to me, Mr. Lean.
It certainly sounds reasonable to me, and I believe that the developer will accept that, and uh, it will certainly be part of the resolution.
Thank you, counsel.
That, 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 that was a very concern of mine. Um, thank you very much. Concern for me and for the city, the city of Jersey City, the Brooklyn that has no backup for twenty families is uh, very uncomfortable. Hey, thank you for that.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you, Eddie. We appreciate it. Um, Cam, I, it's not my intention to open up public comment yet, but uh, just, you know, as the courtesy, uh, let's bring Councilman Bogiano up. Um, if he wants to get a statement on record now, or if he wants to wait for a public comment, I'll leave that up to him.
Chairman, before we allow the councilman to speak, I don't know if the board wants to hear any testimony or if Mr. Lean intended on putting any testimony uh, before the board. I think we clarified the two issues that were open, so.
Um, thank you, counsel. Uh, we left off at the September nineteenth hearing before my planner testified. We got in the engineering testimony, we got in the architecture testimony. We did not have our planner testify. So I do plan to uh, have uh, Mr. Height come up and testify this evening. I was also planning on giving just a quick uh, run-through of the uh, the architectural plans again, given that it's been uh, almost a month and a half since the last meeting, but I have no problem if the uh, if the councilman wants to get up and make a statement now.
All right. Okay. All right, can you hear me?
Councilman, we can hear you. Are you able to turn your video on?
Yeah, uh, hold on a second.
Sure, no problem.
All right. The pla, uh, to planning board members, first, we appreciate your time and service to protecting our community. It is a thankless job, but I do want to remind you that you have a responsibility to the community and not just to the administration of Jersey City. Last meeting, you voted in support of one twenty-four Glenwood Avenue because legal counsel advised you. If you believe that the developer is not a good neighbor, then let the developer sue the city. Now you have set precedents, and all the lawyers for these developers know that you will bend to the threat of a lawsuit. Stand strong with your neighbors and your community. Do not let developers bully you. Twenty-seven twenty-nine Fayette Avenue. The developer has met with this community with Councilman Prince Ari over two years ago. The community asked for less height and density. This developer responded by adding an additional floor and more density. How can this type of developer be a good neighbor? And I ask you board members to consider this, because there's a lot of issues with this here, and it should be considered. Okay?
All right. Thank you, Councilman. We appreciate your time.
Bye.
Okay, Mr. Lean, the floor is yours then.
Um, before I proceed, I just wanna make a quick um, response to uh, the councilman. Uh, yes, we did meet with uh, the community. Uh, it was, it was not two years ago. It was in twenty twenty-two. But we also met with the community on September sixth of twenty twenty-three, after we adjourned this matter from July twenty-fifth all the way until our hearing on September nineteenth. Uh, I made multiple outreaches to both Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Prinzari's office and Councilman Bogiano's office. Uh, we were not able to schedule something until the sixth. When we met with the community, uh, only a few, a handful of people showed up, but we did make those outreach efforts. We were also um, in protracted discussions with uh, the neighbor JD Trucking Facility, because they had some concerns that they would not be able to operate their business. Uh, we were able to resolve that with them, uh, and they have uh, no issues as far as I'm aware uh, as far as the development. So, we have been in communication with the community. Um, the change here was essentially that uh, the affordable housing overlay was adopted uh, by um, by the uh, the city council and this planning board. Um, we are utilizing that. There are two affordable units in this building. Um, and that was essentially where the uh, the change over the year came from. Um, so with that, uh, I'll just uh, bring up Charles Height, um, and uh, he can run you through uh, the proposed variances and also give a little bit of an overview as a project, of the project, as a reminder to the testimony you heard back on September nineteenth.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Hey, Charles, swear in.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, can you spell your name, please?
Yes, Charles Height. Last name is spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
Mr. Height, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Uh, your license is current tonight as a planner?
It is current in the state of New Jersey as a planner.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Height, I'm giving you the unenviable task of trying to sum up all the testimony that was heard on the nineteenth, but I think the board could probably use a refresher before you go into your direct testimony related to the variances that are being requested.
Yeah, um, it, it would be my pleasure to give a, a quick summary to just um, keep the board fresh and all the particulars about the uh, the plans that are being proposed. Uh, I will be sharing my screen, so if you give me one moment. Um, we are proposing a, a multi-family development in the R-three, which is the city's uh, multifamily uh, residential district. So, from a use standpoint, um, the zone does envision um, properties of this size uh, to be uh, redeveloped, developed um, for multifamily use. Um, and hang on, sorry, I'm just selecting the right screen. Um, so what I'm showing on the screen now, and these have all been, um, these documents have been uh, uploaded and then downloaded from uh, the city website. So what you see here has um, been submitted to the city um, well in advance. These documents have been um, updated, uh, updated and uploaded um, prior to ten days of this meeting. Um, and a lot of that has, a lot of latest documents have been in coordination with the MUA that we previously discussed. Um, with respect to the proposed development, um, we are proposing a six-story structure. Um, I'll reiterate that the R-three uh, does permit um, building structures up to eight stories. Um, that has been part of the discussion through the design team as well as um, where the site sits. Um, but at this point in time with this application, um, we are proposing uh, ground floor um, parking that's enclosed in the ground floor layer with the residential floors above. Um, we are along Fayette, uh, Fayette Place. I'm referencing the architectural plans. Um, in terms of location, um, we are located Um in terms of location, um we are located on Fayette Place, which is adjacent to uh the Conrail line, uh which is immediately north across Fayette Place. Um we are uh including two lots, four and five, um the overall property. It has a substantial depth of one hundred and thirty-seven feet um with an overall uh width of tw- of fifty feet. Um as was mentioned, we're near the intersection of Whale Street. Um the main thoroughfare through this neighborhood is Broadway. Um other properties, just to give some context, and I believe we do have an aerial included, and we have some photos. Um but other properties in the neighborhood range from um to the immediate northwest and industrial property. Um that's probably the largest property on the block. Um there are residential um that range in in unit sizes along Broadway uh and um and whales. Um to the immediate west, uh to the immediate east is also residential property uh on Fayette. So the large dominant characteristic of the block is residential. Um there's a large industrial user that does access the site from Fayette. Um and then obviously the Conrail line to the north is also in a major uh land use, a corridor in the neighborhood. Um in terms of general context, uh I can say that most of these properties that front Fayette um from this block also east are all located in the R three. Um and um what I'll mention later is that they are all um under underutilized from a redevelopment standpoint and being reviewed um in terms of uh a greater use, a more appropriate use uh than the current um what what I would call as light industrial uses that are located on um on the properties that have frontage on Fayette Avenue. So that those are the properties to the west, which are all um a variety of either commercial or light industrial, and some properties are even uh um vacant uh industrial buildings further east. So just getting back to the plans, again, this is a mock-up of the ground floor plan in terms of a site plan. Um we are proposing uh twelve off-street parking spaces. Um we have uh basically a full building footprint for the ground floor, which is permitted under the R three standards. Um we did work through several design layouts to accommodate the the twelve spaces, and we felt that this arrangement um was probably the most uh efficient and um safe in terms of having an an appropriate drive aisle, uh parallel parking spaces, a suitable ADA space, and then four um parallel parking spaces. To jump up to the upper floors, again, just in summary fashion, um I can come up, come back to this uh for a planning context. Um but the site is vacant while we're on this sheet. Um we did discuss at length the um utilities and sidewalk within the front yard. So as you can see, our intent is to be consistent um with the upgrades um that are currently there in the street. Um there are, the property does extend into Fayette. Um but we are working closely, as the board is aware, with the M U A uh and the city engineering to uh coordinate the improvements for the proposed development as well as the streetscape, utilities, and any access to the to the site for the for the off-street parking. Um. With respect to the floor plans, uh we do have um as as the architect provided testimony earlier in the presentation on on prior nights. Um we do have a total of twenty units, uh two of them will be affordable uh as under the affordable housing overlay um which was introduced uh at the time of this application being prepared and submitted. Um so we are incorporating uh the affordable housing units. Um we have a total of ten three-bedroom units, five two-bedroom units, and five studios. Um they are all uh within an appropriate unit layout uh in terms of the sizes. So our studios are about six hundred square feet. Our two-bedroom units are a little short of a thousand square feet. And then the three-bedroom units are over a thousand square feet at a thousand eighty-five square feet and one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. So it's a good mix. Um they're integrated in uh all the different floors. Um. So you can see the uh the second floor here shown, we have a studio unit, two three-bedroom units, and a two-bedroom unit. Um one thing that I do want to call out, uh just while we're on this on this plan, the upper floor, the ground floor is permitted to be covered by a hundred percent of the lot. Um the upper floors uh are required to have certain setbacks, so we do need relief from them. Um we are implementing that relief at at the second floor, so just to call call some setbacks out. In the rear yard, we're proposing a setback of twenty feet. And along the sides, um we have uh a few sections that are at zero feet. Um where a a total of five feet of total setbacks required in the R three district. Um but to accommodate the staircases, um we are we are coming to the property line in this um stretch of the property. So that's the zero-foot side yard setback. And then um lastly, in terms of of setbacks, um the the as we shared with the board and covered, the property actually extends into Fayette right-of-way in terms of its improved location. Um the front yard requirement is a maximum of ten feet. And that's measured from property line to the proposed building. Given the right-of-way improvements and where we want to coordinate the sidewalk and the front of the building, we're setting the building back uh thirteen feet, four inches um to accommodate what the right-of-way needs, the curb, as well as the sidewalk. Um so we're greater than that maximum step back that's permitted in the R three. But again, it's um in terms of the physical improvements on Fayette. Um the fact that Fayette is um adjacent to uh the Conrail and the width is um is constructed as it is today, uh our proposed improvements will be coordinated with the existing conditions. So those are the setback uh.
But Mr. Height, I just want to be clear on that. We'll start with the front yard.
Yes.
Front yard setback max is ten. You're providing more than ten feet because of both the manner in which it's measured, where the property line actually is, and the building next door that you are lining up with. Is that accurate?
Yes.
In terms of the side yard, the requirement is five feet combined. And if I understood what you were saying, you have bump outs for the stair tower that provide a zero lot line setback, but the rest of the residential units are set back that combine five feet throughout the building?
Correct, yes. On the um what would be the western elevation, there's setback. Um a three-foot setback for the whole side yard. And on the eastern, it's, I believe, a a three-foot, yeah, both sides are three-foot, one inches setback. So that's correct. It would be a total of six point six feet, two inches, but for the staircase bump out.
And if I'm reading your plan and highlight, that is ten feet of the building that that bump out exists and is a zero lot line condition?
Correct.
And then the rear yard, you're proposing a twenty-foot setback, again, understanding that this is on the second floor and higher as the entire ground floor is allowed to build lot line to lot line to accommodate the parking. What is the requirement of the rear yard?
So the requirement is a percentage of overall lot depth. Um so doing the math with one hundred and thirty-seven feet of lot depth, it's twenty-five percent required, which equates to um thirty-four point two five feet.
And twenty is what's being proposed?
Correct.
All right, just so that I have the the actual numbers down now. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's it's important to clarify the the requirements and the relief, so I appreciate you taking the time to walk that through again for the board and myself. Um. Part of the uh analysis that we did go through in terms of the massing um is with respect to uh the permitted zone. Um again, we're trying to reduce the overall height of the design project by making the proposed stories two through six uh accommodate what would be appropriate unit mix and appropriate unit sizes. Um in other words, we're not entertaining a seven or eight-story structure with a a shorter building footprint um based on the architectural design and input. Um we felt that this balance of of the floor plan of the floor units um is would be the better way to go um for a six-story structure than a seven or eight-story structure that complied with the rear yard. Part of that analysis also included um that the massing shadows that would be created uh would fall north of the property into Fayette right-of-way and the light rail um right light rail corridors. So from a a shadow impact, um there's very little impact to the adjacent residential properties that are located on Broadway to the south. Um also, we did have input from the community on uh the community meetings that we had. Um we did hear concerns from the immediate property owners in terms of um the uh intensity of the overall building, um where at one point we were proposing uh multiple terraces, which are encouraged by the city uh in terms of uh roof terraces, rooftop terraces, outdoor, uh common outdoor space. Um we omitted um the lower-level terrace to reduce the intensity, uh and that can be shown here um on the above the ground floor to provide for an additional buffer um to adjacent properties to the south. In addition, um there is on the adjacent properties um uh garage structures that are are at their rear yard, uh their rear yard property line, which is also our shared rear property line. So those structures create a little bit of a added buffer and separation um from the proposed building and the upper residential floors. And that was taken into account in the overall design in the rear of the of the proposed building. Um that's really it. I can go through the upper floors. Um, Mr. Lean, I don't know if if you want me to do that or if I can jump back into some of the planning testimony. Um.
Uh I'll leave that up to the board. We did provide that testimony. Um however, I think at this point, I think it's it's better for you just to proceed with uh the remainder of your planning testimony.
Right, so wh- while the um screen is shared, I did want to um bring up the the shadow study that we prepared. Um whenever we are proposing uh structures that are greater than forty feet uh in the city, a shadow study is required. Uh not if relief is needed or not, but just by the sheer mass of it to understand what the impacts of the development are on the adjacent properties. So um in our course of our work, we uh take the architectural plans, uh we create a model, uh a render of existing conditions. Obviously, there's a vacant property involved um and model the proposed structure. This is all to scale. Um. We also do a view shed corridor study. Um so we've we've indicated uh images, um and you can see uh to the west and north and south, uh you can see um the Conrail right-of-way, some of the industrial properties in the area, um to the south are the residential buildings um that are along Broadway. Um this is to the west with the industrial property immediately adjacent to the subject property. Um and to the east, um you can see some of the uh older industrial buildings uh and then Journal Square uh further in the the rear of the image. So that's where you get a lot more graduated height as you get closer to Journal Square. Um but again, this is a mix of industrial and residential properties. From a a visual impact, we're not obscuring any views. Um. Or any scenic uh scenic byways that that are referenced in in the assessment. From a shadow study, um and I I won't go through every sheet of this, but um in terms of your peak impacts, you're looking at any law, any any area of adjacent properties that are one hundred percent of the time within shadow um or uh a substantial impact on any rear yards. So uh one of the areas that we look at is in um the morning and afternoon, summer hours. Um you can see in the morning in June, um we are casting shadows just into the adjacent property um which is the industrial lot. Um. Again, there's no point which time that any of these properties are fully within shadow. Uh but at no point in time, I should also mention, are any of the adjacent residential properties along Broadway uh in shadow as a result of the proposed structure. So again, the the shadows are falling northwest um in the morning as the sun comes up in the east. And then as we get into the afternoon, you can see three P M. In June, um the shadows are again north uh north and east. There are shadows on the rooftop um of the adjacent residential building. Um but again, that uh side yard is permitted, the building height is permitted um along this run. We've set the staircase, uh you can see here just beyond um that structure. So in other words, we've designed the proposed structure to be compliant with the zoning um and create what the intended impacts are from a built perspective, um not needing any relief along this side yard. Okay, um. So one of the other uh variances that we need, I'll stop sharing. Um. One of the other variances that we need outside of the uh yard variances that I I kind of already covered and we walked through um is with respect to parking. Uh the R three standards uh require a point three unit, uh point three space per bedroom. Um when you tally up all the bedrooms, we have approximately forty-five bedrooms. The requirement is uh fourteen spaces. Uh as I mentioned earlier, what's being proposed is twelve. Um with respect to um the lack of two spaces, um we thought it was an appropriate uh design. We didn't want to uh include another uh parking space um that would be difficult to maneuver into. Um we did consult with the traffic engineer on this project um who also felt it would be appropriate to provide um the the that proposed twelve-unit layout on the ground floor. Um we are within um a a a little bit of a a walking distance to Journal Square, so we're about point nine miles to Journal Square Plaza. Um there are people who uh do commute um along Sip Avenue, Broadway uh into Journal Square. Um that's about a fifteen-minute walk. Um so that's that's within proximity. Um we are also uh near Sip Avenue and West Side Avenue, which do have bus routes um that carry people throughout the city in those north, north, south corridors um that are located along those road roadways. So with respect to available public transit, um it is uh in in the area. Um we also thought just from a sheer demand standpoint that not every future tenant in this development will require a parking space. Um that also reinforces the goals and objectives of the master plan, which I'll get into. Uh but that was the overall design thinking in terms of the balance of parking supply for the project um and utilizing that ground floor layout. Um. I believe that's the testimony that we covered with respect to the positive criteria. Um we talked about the yards, the front, sides, and rear. Um we talked about mitigating the impact of the rooftops. Um we also have designed the upper floor, uh the upper story, a common roof to be set back even further from the rear uh property line to again further mitigate um the proximity of the a common roof deck. Um we did also discuss if the board uh required it as a condition to install um what we often find is planted of um plant uh planted uh buffers or vegetation road uh hedges along the the limits of the roof to create that screen and buffer. Um so no one can get to the edge of the roof. That's a that's a technique that we incorporate on other similar projects. So um we can do that in this setting as well. Again, we're we're not at the roof to begin with. We are set further back. Uh but to just to create that vertical screen for the common rooftop. Um. With respect to the negative criteria, um we uh had a lot of work to coordinate with uh the utilities um and the overall right-of-way on Fayette. So I I do want to thank the board for allowing us to go through that process. Um it was one of the first times in in my uh professional career and experience. Um it was one of the first times in in my uh professional career and experience in Jersey City that there were. Uh a lot of uh history to this site. Um and it did take a fair amount of coordination, um not only from um our project engineer. And project team, but also on the city's part to make sure all the uh appropriate upgrades and connections were being included. So. Um to Mister Commissioner Torres, um I do think that at this point in time, um getting the coordination um with the N U A. Um having the available design solutions um and incorporating the backup system. Will serve as a way to substantially uh reduce any substantial detriment from um utility. And future uh tenants for this location. Uh again, it's it's a vacant property. Um there were prior plans. What's being advanced today, as you you know, is is a six story apartment building, which is in keeping with the zoning. Um but we are uh going to up make the necessary upgrades for the utility connections. Um we did also talk about the parking um with respect to any congestion um in the area. I know that was a. Uh a can an issue that was raised by the neighbors. Um we don't anticipate um. All uh all of the future tenants, based on the traffic engineering review, that all the future tenants of this building will require parking. Um that's why we landed at the twelve spaces. Um we don't anticipate a an oh a spillover effect of parking. Um in this neighborhood, um it is uh to uh. They it place is uh used as uh an access point to the industrial property. Um that was part of the conversation with that property owner um along the lines of. Construction, but also uh moving forward. Um our plan is to not have vehicles park. Um on on the street on Fayette uh to keep that uh free flowing um traffic uh free free. Uh flowing to the traffic along Fayette Place. I think I already covered uh the impacts with respect to the building mass, uh the shadow study that we did. We did take time and look at all the property uh property lines to understand what the zoning envisioned. And permits um al- also as well as mitigating the impacts um that we felt. Uh from what would been a higher store, a higher building um with a lower structure, albeit a little bit. Larger of a footprint than the zoning allows with that rear yard setback. Um but again, we felt we mitigated the impacts. With twenty feet of a setback, no lower roof deck and. Um a a lower overall story to the building. Um I believe that's um the negative criteria. Um I should also say that this project will realize to affordable units. Um so that's part of the new affordable housing ordinance overlay, um which also does um. Is encouraged throughout the city in all zones, um not just redevelopment plans, but um in all zones. Um with respect to any substantial impairment of the master plan or zoning ordinance, again, um we're in the R three, we're permitted use. Uh we are permitted building height and we're let two stories less than the maximum. Um so in terms of the zoning, um the overall size of the building, the square feet. We are less than what could be contemplated with an eight story structure. Um we are also advancing the master plan affirmatively. Um with respect to ensuring the city's available housing is balanced and meets the needs of all few, all current and future city residents. So. This is transitioning a vacant property into a development that is recognized in the R S R three. As a permitted use, a multifamily development, it'll produce twenty uh future rent uh future units. And two of them will be affordable. Um that I believe is my direct testimony. Uh Mr. Lean, I know we prepped multiple times over. If I missed anything, um please. Let me know if and as always, if the board has any questions, um I'd be happy to answer them.
Uh just one question, uh Mister Height, as it relates to the affordable housing overlay. Uh two of the requirements when you provide the uh necessary housing under the overlay. Uh one is it eliminates any density requirement, correct?
That's correct. There's there's there. Yes, that's correct.
And the second is it actually eliminates any parking requirements, correct?
Correct.
Yes, but despite that, we are providing twelve on site, uh which is fairly close to what is required under the R C uh R three requirements.
Correct. Um the affordable housing overlay is uh the goal is to incentivize. Affordable housings to be incorporated in new development, um which we are doing. Um we are. Two sheet, two parking spaces shy of what the R three zoning standards have. So fourteen is required, twelve is proposed.
And so it's somewhat of a balancing act to provide that parking uh while also providing the affordable housing, correct? And we're we're basically meeting that by coming close to what is required uh while also providing the affordable units.
E- exactly. I think it was a matter of of an appropriate layout for the twelve spaces, not cramming in too many. Um from a safety standpoint and circulation, um but also realizing what in a likely anticipated demand for parking for future tenants would be. So yes.
Thank you, Mister Height. I have no further questions. Uh I do have Lee Klein as a traffic expert available. Uh however, I don't believe his testimony is needed at this point. Uh so with that, we would conclude our presentation.
Alright, thank you, Council. Um Mister Height, I do have uh one question that I didn't hear testimony on. Uh there's a requirement of two street trees. Uh what is the reason that they're not on the plan?
Yeah, uh Chairman Langston, thank you for for bringing that up. Um so i- it's. It it's a little interesting with respect to treat street trees because the sidewalk will be at this point in time running along private property. Um we have a curb cut, fire hydrant, a street pole to relocate. So within fifty feet. Um we're somewhat limited in locating the necessary street trees. We also have an issue with the sidewalk width. So um street trees are supposed to be planted in a width of five feet, which would further reduce the. Space for anyone walking by the street tree along the sidewalk. Um so depending on um. The board and and city planning, um if variances are required, then we do need relief from that. There's the payment in lieu. Uh but that's that's where we landed with the overall design. Um let me. I can pull up the uh. Plan if it might help.
As you, as uh Chairman, if I may, and please pardon me, I have a sore throat. Um. So the only thing I would ask or bring to your attention is is uh. Board, I'm sorry, staff recommendation number four says aside from spacing. Um that it comport with the city ordinance. So maybe when we come to the point of voting, if it's, you know, uh move forward. Then if that number four could be stricken, based on this uh exchange of ideas. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner.
And and just to put on the record, uh I've already spoken with my client about this and we would be willing to pay the uh. Fee and low if the the board is so willing to uh to grant that relief.
Okay, thank you, Council. Um that's my only question for Mister Height. Anybody else? Any questions?
I have a question for you. I just to I'll be. Picking back off the chairman last this question. Uh you mentioned the movement of the light pole. Are you gonna be moving that light pole that is on the um. Left hand side of the property or is that?
But I uh uh again, the actual relocation of I think still has to be coordinated um with P S C N G. But uh all the upgrades uh when they take place and if any relocation is possible or needed um is being discussed. Uh but I know from a physical standpoint that has to exist um moving forward. Um I don't, I'm not the professional to answer if it can or can be replaced with another means. But I think that was part of the street tree discussion, uh cause that's the street pole is at the front of the property today.
So my my question is just going back and I and I know I I can see the answer and the pictures of the vendors that you showed. The property line is to the chain and fence, right? Uh when you do the first level on the left hand side, the setback, second floor going up. You are not passing that, you're not going up against the other property that's alongside, right? There was a walkway there. That was staying existence.
So are we talking about the side yard or the front yard? I just wanna be clear.
Okay, your side, your side, your setback. So your property line to the, if you're wrong. Uh I wanna say fired, looking on the left hand side where the property is next to you. That that your your property, your your building on the first floor is going right up to the chain link fence?
Uh so.
If you look at your architect, you should see the picture.
On the on the ground floor, yes. Um upper stories, the majority of the building sets back three feet, one inch.
Okay, so you're not, if you're not gonna interfere with the patient next door's property. And the utilities that are there or anything like that.
That's not, that's not.
I wanted to be clear on that. So you see the gas meters, you see some stuff that that would have to be moved about. Okay, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Anything for Mister Height?
Nope.
Alright, thank you, Mister Height. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um Mister Lean, one uh one condition that I would like to talk about, I I always bring this up when the affordable housing is involved. Uh that all the units that are affordable are the same fit and finish of uh the rest of the units, same appliances, same counters, everything. I absolutely will incorporate that, all fixtures, all uh finishes. Uh all uh appliances, everything will be the same uh as in the market rate units.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Um. Counsel, anything else?
I have nothing else to add unless uh the board has additional questions or questions for my traffic engineer. That is uh, that's our testimony.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on uh traffic?
No.
Do you have Mister Klein available?
No.
Okay, so uh with no more questions, I'll open it up for public comment at this time. Anybody from the public, if you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Promoted Jeanetta Rotundo. So Jeanetta declined, but Mike Manzo, I don't know, Mike Manzo also declined. Um they may have walked away from their computer or something. Oh, now Mike is joining us.
Okay. Hi, Mike. If you're there, you can unmute, turn your video on. I saw you unmuted, Mike, but we don't hear you and we obviously don't see you.
Well, I promoted Jeanette again.
Okay, uh yeah, let's come back to uh Mike Manzo then. And Jeanette, if you are there, you can unmute and turn your video on.
And it appears Jeanette has left us.
No, she just moved up. She's still here.
Yeah, God.
I hear you, Jeanette. I don't see that. I hear you.
I don't care if you see me, but uh it doesn't.
I do. We need to see you, though. So if you're able to, can you turn your video on?
I don't see video. I can't figure this out.
It's right next to where you unmuted.
Start my video?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, good. I have, I have, I I'm a little bit annoyed.
Hang on a moment.
Rotundo, you have to wait for the camera to turn on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I'm not used to this.
Alright.
Sure.
Did the red line go off the screen?
Hey, let me know what to do.
So next to the mute, there is the start video. It looks like a box, a little.
I pressed that. I did. I pressed that.
And is the red line showing?
No. No red line.
Oh, Miss Rotundo, it appears that your camera is not functioning then.
Start my video. Okay, that's I'll press it again. I have no idea. I would hate to not speak.
No, we're gonna make sure you speak, Miss Rotundo.
Okay, you let me know, cause I'm dying over here.
Um, Mike, are you comfortable going forward without video? Yeah, no problem. So, Miss Rotundo, I just.
Knows what I look like, so.
Just before you speak, Miss Rotundo, normally I would just swear you in. So if you could just uh. You swear that any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And could you give me uh state and spell your name and give me your home address, please?
Uh Jeanette, the two N's, two T's, Rotundo, and my address is four, five. Conduct Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, oh seven, three, zero, six.
Thank you. Miss Rotundo, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Yeah, I'll do uh I speak very fast. First of all, they're talking about the rooftop. Where they might go up there. Is anyone gonna be monitoring that? So I'm speaking on behalf of the people that lived there for years, forever. Their quality of life of being quiet, quiet, silence. This is gonna be a mess. I know this is gonna be a mess because nobody's gonna be monitoring the roof. And the generator, what side is it gonna be for flushing out the water or making sure the water doesn't back up into the neighbor's homes? Or the street because we know, everybody knows in Marion, that we have flooding between West Side and Wa- Broadway. I don't know what it is lately because it hasn't been that bad, but it does get really terrible. And. Last meet, the meetings that we had with Mister Lean, I was present and I had asked him or someone did, but I asked him too. Was there any going to be any affordable affordable apartments or home uh rooms? And they said, no way. Even the developers said, no. So now there's develop affordable buildings. Then. I think the building is just too high. It doesn't go, it doesn't match up with the rest of the the complex there. I am so sorry for these people that are there because anybody that goes, I was I was speaking very fast and excuse me, but I I wanna get, take advantage of the three. Minutes. If I was doing, I have lines coming underneath my home, anywhere near me to cause me to have trouble and be uncomfortable. I will definitely go to a lawyer. I will have an attorney ready. I don't care. I will be a nervous wreck when it rains, when it storms. And uh the gentleman, Mister Lean, he said that only a handful of people were there. He's lying. I know he's lying. He'll do anything to get this project in because it wasn't a handful. Everyone was against it and I don't think. I don't really think they're gonna be good neighbors. And that's what, that's what I'm I'm trying to be very, very um. Honest. Um if anybody knows me, they know I'm an honest person and I speak my mind. Those those issues. Those issues are gonna make these poor people that pay their taxes, live quietly in that in that area and right there in that little corner. This is gonna be too much, too many people. And one more thing, everybody that's gonna move there, their tenants, they're gonna say they got one car. How do you know they're gonna have one car? Most family members have two, between two and three cars. They're gonna use the parking outside. Take away parking from people that live there. This is all for me. I wouldn't accept it. I would wanna know more. I would hold on to get all my information because these are the lives of the people that live there. And I love people and I watch out and I make sure with all the people that are in Marion, that everyone has a quality of life. And that is my concern. My concern is them happy. I don't think anybody that's there wants to live with these people. You don't know what's coming in. Are they, are they gonna be renters or that that's or that's gonna be condos? I don't think they're gonna be condos. Anybody can move there. You're gonna have more people than they ever expected hanging out late at night. Whatever they do, go to the roof. What's going on? It's gonna be on the console. Is the land, is the landlord gonna live there? What side is the garbage gonna be put out? And where which side is the generator? Or or the thing that's gonna pump out? Is it gonna be on the outside of the street or in the back? And one more thing, and I'm thank you very much for letting me speak. The people that have no problem that are working across the street. The auto people, whatever people there that that are working, they don't have any problems. Do you know why? Because they do not live there. They do not live there. We don't care. They don't care. They go home. Would anyone want this in front of their home? I don't think so. I wouldn't. I'd have a lawyer ready and willing. I wouldn't. I'd have a lawyer ready and willing to do, and do my bidding if anything happens, because this gonna be a main, this gonna be a, uh, to me, it's gonna be tragic.
Mr. Rotundo, we're, we're way over your three minutes, but I appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much for you allowing me to speak. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
All right, I see Mike Manzo. Mike, are you, are, are you able to speak? We cannot hear you.
We can't hear you, Mike. No, we still have nothing. No, we can't hear you. I can see your lips moving. At least we can see you where they are.
There is a call-in number on the agenda. If you wish to call in, um, when you call in, you'll have to raise your hand.
Chairman, let's move along to the next member of the public, if there is one, and if Mr. Manzo can figure out how to get his audio working, come back.
Sure. Okay, if we could, let's, um, move on with public comment. I do wanna hear from Mike Manzo, though, tonight. My night's not gonna be complete until I hear from Mike.
Promoted Pam from Councilman Bogiano's office.
Hi, Pam. I'll swear in. You swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you just state and spell your name, please?
Pam Andes, A, N like Nancy, D like David, E, S like Sally.
Thank you.
Ms., uh, Andes, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Good to see everybody. Um, as, uh, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Torres, uh, for his comment on the electric, uh, backup electric for the pump. Um, that definitely happened in, uh, Sandy, and also the last storm in Ida with a couple of these high-end buildings. Um, with this new condition, um, question for the chairman, Langston, can you carry this to the next meeting so that the new drawings can be properly studied by the planning board? So that's my first question. Um, my comment on the community meetings, there definitely needs to be a proper community meeting. The last meeting was not convenient to the council members. Uh, councilperson Prince Aray and Councilman Bogiano, um, are, have been active with this community. And, um, just another question for the architect. Where is the nearest green space, or is there dog's park, um, or is there greenery, since there are no trees? That's a common, um, request from the community. And to, also to the art, architect, are the parking spaces standard parking spaces? This is a common complaint from, hi, I just moved in, and I, you know, these are compact cars. So, um, that's a common complaint from new people. And board members, um, I ask you to encourage the developer to meet again with the community before they go to the zoning board. Um, it would be great, you know, we do have these community meetings on a regular basis, so, um, it should happen. Um, also, the idea that residents will not require parking, I, I do appreciate that this development has some parking. Um, but I just wanted you to know that a lot of these new residents also ask for their street to be permitted parking. So that will happen. And thank you, um, for the setbacks. Um, and thank you for the affordable housing. So there, there are two. I know everybody wants more. But, um, there are two, so that's good. And I think those are all my notes. Um, thank you again.
All right, Ms. Andes, thank you. We appreciate your time. Um, Council, if we could just address, uh, the, the parking space size, their, their regular size spaces, right? They're not listed as compact?
Um, I think it would probably be better if that was through testimony instead of me just, um, agreeing to that. So if, uh, Mark Campione is here, our architect, I would have him come up, be sworn, and, um, have him testify to that.
Hi, Marcos, where are you in?
Here.
If you'll raise your right hand.
Yep.
Do you swear any testimony you give today is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Mark Campione, C.A.M.P.I.O.N.E.
Thank you.
Mr. Campione, good evening. Um, unfortunately, we do have to qualify you. Uh, you've testified before. Is your license current tonight?
Yes, it is. It is current standing. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Thank you. Uh, to address the question with regards to the standard parking dimensions, that typically range between eight and a half feet wide to nine feet by eighteen feet long, and we are proposing nine feet wide by eighteen feet. So we are well within the standard size of a parking spot. They are not compact.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, one other question while we have you, uh, a generator location.
The proposed location, without getting into design and reviewing it with the engineer, we would be probably proposing it, um, beneath the garage level, adjacent to, um, the stair area.
Okay, so it would be internal to the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Lean, without seeing that, um, I would want that as a condition of approval, that the generator's located internal to the building, not exterior?
Absolutely, and that will be incorporated into our conformance sets, should we be approved this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if we could, let's, uh, continue on with public comment.
Any luck, Mr. Manzo?
Joseph has joined the panelists.
Hi, Joe. I'll swear in if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Sure. My name is Joseph Capazoli, C like Charlie, A, P like Peter, O, two Z's like zebra, O L I. I reside at twelve Bryant Avenue, Jersey City.
Thank you.
Mr. Capazoli, good evening. I have three minutes for you.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I, I just wanna speak for myself, but also for some members of the community that weren't able to, uh, attend this evening. Uh, the community met with the owner, uh, and his representatives about eighteen months ago. And at that time, the owner presented a project of five stories and sixteen units. The community was not in favor of a project of that size at this location. The community did express, uh, they were fine with, uh, two or three family homes that would, um, there'd be structures that mirror what is currently there at the location now. Uh, the owner agreed to consider the community's input and would plan on meeting with us again. The community never heard back from any of the representatives or the owner. As a matter of fact, we only learned about them going or wanting to go in front of the planning board, uh, when someone within the two-hundred-foot radius of the project received the notice in the mail. That's when I was contacted, and we reached out, and we were able successfully to have them postpone that, the meeting with the planning board. Um, we did meet again, and actually, it should be noted that not only didn't the owner contact the members of the community to meet a second time, they also upped the size of the building from five stories to six stories, and from sixteen units to twenty units, without even having the consideration to come back to the community to explain that before trying to go in front of the planning board. When we finally met a second time on September sixth, uh, the community once again expressed their, uh, displeasure with what was being proposed. So therefore, I'm asking for myself and respectfully for all the members of the community, for you to vote this down this evening, that approve the application. And again, thank you for, uh, giving me the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. Mr. Manzo, any luck? I- if you could, um, you could leave your video on and maybe call in?
That is handled.
Yeah, we just can't hear him. We're having some trouble with the audio on his end, it looks like.
There any num- maybe he has called in, and there are numbers dialed? I don't know if anyone knows his number.
Oh, there we go. There we go.
And I believe you pressed star six. Is that you, Mr. Manzo?
Hello?
Hello?
Uh, yeah, I'm not Mr. Manzo.
You are not Mr. Manzo.
Not Mr. Manzo.
Since you're here, I'll swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Thor Shireen McCormack, S.H.I.R.I.N., M.A.C., C.O.R.M.A.C.K.
Thank you.
Home address is one thirty Glenwood.
Good evening, Ms. McCormack. We have three minutes for you.
Thank you. When I look at this project, I don't support it, and the reason why is because it begs the question, how much is enough? Is too much ever enough? When they, you know, you, you have this huge giant deep lot, and there's green space, there's a vacant lot, there's so much opportunity to do something really, really good here. Uh, and yet I see, you know, really no setback at the front because of the building next door. Well, what, what does that do to set the precedent for the next building that comes on the other side of this? And then there's, you know, they're required thirty-four-foot rear setback and proposes only twenty. I feel like if, you know, we're trying to build community, do community building, create beautiful walkable neighborhoods, there's a really great opportunity here. As we all know, Jersey City has a lack of green spaces and tree canopy, especially near that one-nine area that's circuit, the circle. And, uh, you know, I just don't, I, I just feel like without even the street trees, you know, being planted that are required, you know, pay the fee, whatever, but it still doesn't make a, a nice living space for the people who will be here and the people who are already there. Um, I also, you know, think there should be a, a situation of give and take. So, you know, if you're gonna ask for variances, you have to give something back to the community that just makes rational sense and include the community, and I don't see that happening here. Um, as Pam Andes mentioned, there was a lack of that community meeting, the guy, the person who spoke before me said as well. And from what I understand, the developer agreed to a four-story building with no rooftop. Um, that's what I've been told by various members of the community, and then they went back and added stories, at least one, and added a roof deck. So, you know, I mean, something's definitely not aligning here. Um, I'm happy to see the parking. I don't know why they need relief from the extra two. I, I, I just include the required parking, you know? Um, there's no hardship. There's a huge lot. There's no variance needed. Um, I also think that it was pretty egregious to present this to the board with the stormwater issues that were there back a month and a half ago in September. You know, the two-inch pipe suitable for a home. Um, it just shows like disregard for the community and disregard for the board. Um, it's just a negligence that shouldn't have even, you know, it should have made them fix that before they even came to this board. Um, also, the surrounding homes are only one to three stories. All, if you look at one-twenty Broadway behind the property, it's only one story, so this, it won't blend at all with the surroundings. And, um, you know, um, I, I had recent experience in my neighborhood at one-twenty-four Glenwood with owners promising to do something, agreeing to do something, and then doing the exact opposite. Uh, unfortunately, that was passed when the hearing, it was, the case was reheard at this board. But, you know, I don't like an owner going back on their agreement. I find that very concerning. I think that wraps up my statement. I'm not for this project. I'm for responsible development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormack. We appreciate it. Mike Manzo, do we have you yet? Give me a, uh, a thumbs up if you called in yet. Okay.
And so it's press star nine to raise your hand, if you have called in?
There is a call-in with the hand raised?
Can you hear me now?
We hear you when we see you. Fantastic. I'm glad that this is finally.
All right.
So, Mr. Manzo, I swear, swear you in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your red hand, do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Michael Manzo, M.A.N.Z.O., eighty-two Wright Avenue, W.R.I.G.H.T. Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, lifelong.
Thank you.
Mike, good evening. Always a pleasure to see you. Uh, just for the record, I think I should, uh, make it aware, I do know Mr. Manzo. I'm sure most of the board members know Mr. Manzo. Uh, we have never discussed this application outside of this meeting. And, um, I just feel like I need to put that on the record, and if you could just confirm that we've never talked about this application, Mike.
No, we have not. We have not.
All right, thank you, sir.
And like many other people on this board, this is a community. We're neighbors. We see each other. That's what a community is all about, okay? And that's what hurts me, because, Mr. Height, you are good, you are smooth, okay? But, Mr. Lean, this is much more than a mathematical equation here, okay? There are people that are, are, are hurt by this. There are people that wanna be heard. We never had a meeting with the changes that you induced after the R-three zoning changed, okay? The roof deck wasn't part of it. Amir came to us, and we had a pretty good meeting. The meeting in July, nobody even wanted to be there anymore. You guys were, were like strong-arming everybody, okay? Then the last meeting, we had the M.U.A. Thank you, Santo. You did a beautiful job on bringing up discrepancies with contracts and paid permits and stuff like that. It sounded like, Mr. Lean, this was the leverage you wanted to make the project go through. You're putting the, the, the project before any of these approvals, okay? This is not right. And, and, Mr. Height, you said, "we felt." Who's "we"? You excluded the community with this. You make a beautiful presentation, but there was nothing wrong with what the community resolved with, Mr. Amir, and then all of a sudden, it went away, and nobody came back after the changes were made. I'm just reading my notes here. Uh, it is a give and take, okay? It, it has to be a balancing act. We understand that. Uh, it has been a vacant land. It's been a neglected vacant piece of land, numerous citations. It, it's, it's been neglected, and it was an eyesore for the community, by the same owner that's here for this very same application. Affordable housing, that doesn't make everything right. The rents that they're, they're gonna ask are far beyond what is affordable here in Jersey City. Parking? You want us as good neighbors to waive the parking requirement? Okay, Mr. Lean, I'm sure you found a loophole. We don't need that parking space, okay? Then you want to, to cut fourteen-point-two-five feet from the back because of a good neighbor thing? Come on, man, you think you're really entitled to that after you're slamming the neighborhood, falling on deaf ears to what we're saying? The roof deck wasn't supposed to be part of that. Amir agreed to that. What happened now? There's no way to monitor it. We see what happens to these multifamily, unless Amir is gonna live there. Is he gonna live there now? Did he change his mind? Mr. Height, it's Fayette Avenue and Wales Avenue. You went to Fayette Place and Wales Street. It's Wales Avenue and Fayette Avenue. Commissioner Torres, I thank you for your knowledge with plumbing. Uh, there is a lot of problem back there. This is a flooding area, and I got the gut feeling that after everything is sun and said and done, it's gonna be an imposition on a city and a tax failure to fix flooding, provide sewerage, sidewalks. I- i- it's not the right thing to do. And, and to, to, Mr. Lean, to turn to everything and say it's compliant with zoning, there's a community here. Please listen to the community. I thank the board for its time and the involvement here. I thank you, all of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. We appreciate it. All right, if anybody else is here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
I still think we have someone, right? Uh, Commissioner?
No, that's, no. So, the public wishing to speak on this item, I move to close the public forum.
Second.
Okay, motion is made, and seconded, public is closed. Uh, Francisco, do you wanna wrap up?
Yes, so I will be very brief. Um, staff does agree with Mr. Height's testimony. Again, the purpose of the R-three zone is to provide for a broad range of multifamily housing options. Uh, the multifamily mid-rise district contains. Uh, the multifamily mid-rise district contains mid-rise buildings of three to eight stories, where the applicant is proposing six stories for this application. Overall, staff recommends approval with conditions that are outlined in my report, which is also uploaded on the data portal. Um, and I believe there were several other conditions included during this, uh, hearing, so that also will be added. Um, with that said, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Okay, thanks, Francisco. And, and Francisco, just for the record, uh, being this is the R-three, this could be an eight-story building as of right, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P-two-two dash two-one-zero as presented to the board tonight with, uh, the additional conditions of, um, having, uh, as you said, Chairman, all units affordable uh, as the market rate units, uh, and having a backup pump and generator, uh, which has to be in, inside the building, uh, and not outside.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
On the motion to approve, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I'd like to thank the public first for coming out. This is what this is about. You know, we're, uh, we're all in, in a community, uh, Jersey City. Um, and so, you know, you guys, uh, have the right to come out, and we love it when we hear from you. Um, having said that, you know, this, this applicant, uh, this application has been in front of us before, and they've sort of, um, initially, when we were confused about stuff, they went back to the drawing board, uh, and kind of, you know, reassessed and reassembled and came back with what we were asking them to do. Um, as it relates to the R-three zone and the variances that are being requested, uh, you know, uh, this board can only look at what's being presented and, uh, not aesthetics or not anything like that. So in terms of that, um, I think that the variances that are being sought are, um, uh, not the minimus, but they are, uh, fair. Uh, and again, this is in our three zone. This, this building could go up to an eight-story building. Uh, it is permitted to do that. So, uh, I, I will have to vote aye.
Hey, Commissioner Torres? Oh, you're muted, Commissioner Torres.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Um, you know, this project just kept coming back and forth to us and everything, and I'm kind of, um, glad I took a drive over there and took a walk around the site itself. Um, it's nice to see somebody wanted to develop in that area, but, um, and this is clearly understandable that, um, the conditions with the pumping station backup generator, I appreciate that it is a condition, and I appreciate that it's written in that way, um, with the amount of units that there are, twenty units, and even with that condition, um, well, let me, let me go back. When I took a walk around there, um, again, that's why I'm glad I did. The way the injection pump outside on the sidewalk is being maintained and, uh, taken down is not impressive at all. Um, um, chip it hazard. Um, I didn't like the way it looked, and, um, whoever maintains it should, um, have more consideration. I stand well, and I, uh, you know, this, and that. But the, um, going back to the twenty units, I am not, still not comfortable with the situation and design on that, so, um, with that, I'm going to vote a no on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Uh, um, the public amount, Pam Bojano, so Jeanette, they really gave their mind to this, uh, project. Uh, but you, you guys could have gone back to the community, but it is the apartments from sixteen to twenty. Uh, you have affordable housing, uh, two units. There are, there are quite a few parking, but outside public parking on the street is allowed for everybody, so you cannot say no to that. And, uh, other thing is backup generator, which is inside the building, so that's fine. And, uh, you did good. You came back before, and then you, we asked you to do so many things, which you guys did it. And I think I'm going to vote yes.
Uh, Commissioner Lipsky?
So I'll use the same stream of thought that Dr. Desai did to a point, and then diverge by saying that this project has come a long way. A lot of, uh, boxes have been checked off. I just don't feel, uh, super comfortable when a aide to a councilperson and community activist who are well, uh, trenched in the area and who do a lot of community work come and say that they're perplexed or not really, uh, happy with it. So, I think if we can go back to the community, get a understanding, I'm not saying that they have to, I, I think agreeing to disagree is even okay. But at this point, it just seems like there's, uh, bafflement, and so I'm going to vote nay.
Commissioner Cruz?
Hello, how you doing? Um, Chris? Chairman? Are you there, Mr. Chairman?
I'm here, David.
I have a question. Is there enough time for them to go back and talk to the community and to the councilpeople and the community activists? Is it, is it a good time to, to ask them if the attorney wants to go back again?
Um, we're in a motion right now. I don't know if we could backtrack out of a motion?
We cannot. We're in the middle of voting.
Uh, I just wish that they would go back with the community and talk to the councilpeople. My, my opinion, I'm going to vote no.
Chairman Winkson?
Uh, we missed Commissioner Green.
Oh, I thought she was sitting this one out because.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Um, so I, I it's a tough one because, um, you know, while, while the height is, you know, it could have been eight stories. Uh, they're providing six stories. The, the unit mix, I, I really like. Um, you know, we need more three-bedroom units in the city. Um, it's not often we see this number of three-bedroom units in a project. Um, I, I think the the deviations I don't think are egregious. Um, I think there's a, uh, you know, competent reason for all of them. Uh, Mr. Height's testimony proves that. Uh, planning staff recommends approval. I think they're, uh, in agreement with Mr. Height's testimony. Um, you, you know, they did agree to all our conditions. Um, they did go back to the M U A. We got as much clarity as we could possibly get from the M U A. Uh, so I'm comfortable moving forward with the M U A conditions in there. Um, there's three different scenarios where they could build this. Uh, so that being said, I think, uh, overall, I think it is a positive project with the affordable housing, uh, so I am going to vote aye.
Okay, so there are.
It's a three-three. The motion does not pass.
That is correct.
Okay, so Santo. Do we entertain a new motion for approval? Do we entertain a motion for denial?
Uh, Chair, Chairman, uh, be, be, before we proceed, I, I, I know we moved quickly here. I, I didn't get a chance to respond to any of the community input, and I feel like it had a major impact on the vote. Um, I don't know if it's possible at this point, now that we've had a vote already that ended in a tie, for me to, to respond to some of that community input and possibly go back for another motion, uh, for this, for approval.
I, I apologize, counsel. You're actually, you're absolutely right. Um, I didn't go back to you after public comment. I should have. Um, so that being said, do you want to uh, comment on any of the public comment?
I, I do, um, because there, there was a lot of it. Um, the fact of the matter is, is that personally, I was not present for either of the community.
Excuse me, attorney. I know you want to comment on what they said, but there's also a lot more people in the community that were.
We're not going to engage in.
Okay, no problem.
Who's saying what to the community, please. So, Mr. Lane, I'll say this. Mr. Lane, I will say that. We've had a vote, and it did not pass. So at this point, Mr. Lee, obviously, you can, uh, respond to the comments, but right now, we have a motion that did not pass. So the board does not have to do anything further, counsel.
Right, so, and, and I don't know that speaking is going to do anything for tonight, but Councilor Lafferty, let me ask this, given it's a three-three, and as Councilman Lee has, has stated just seconds ago, on the record, there were a lot of people from the community who spoke, and it obviously had an impact on decisions tonight. So, um, is it, I mean, so what's the ramification of getting this back on? It, or on an agenda if they go back and meet with the community?
So again, the community comments are the community's comments, okay? We've gone through this now multiple times. This board is not impaneled for the purpose of, uh, approving or disapproving applications based on the community's feelings, generally speaking. That's not an appropriate consideration. While we have to take the community into consideration, this is a preliminary and final site plan application with C variances for front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, and parking. The size of the building, the density of the building, the affordable housing units, those things have already been decided by the nature of the actual zoning in place and the affordable housing overlay. So this board's charge and its duty and its statutory obligation is to weigh the positive and negative criteria and determine whether or not the applicant has satisfied its burden with respect to the C variances being sought, which in large part was the testimony provided by Mr. Height. And with respect to the site plan application, the issue of utility connection is absolutely in play. This board is well within its power to get into that and to dig into that and make them go to the M U A and make them jump through all of the hoops that this board made them jump through. Either to or not to this board's satisfaction, same thing with the backup generator and the pump, that is all absolutely proper. At the end of the day, what we have right now is we had a motion to approve. There were three yeses and three noes. The motion failed. But for the purposes of the record, Mr. Lane should be allowed to make his comments. Uh, I think that that is proper, but ultimately, it's up to the board whether they want to entertain any other motion or not tonight or in the future. Mr. Lee may file a request for reconsideration based on what happened here this evening, and the only reason I bring that up is because the board just went through that legal process, and that is what it is. So, that's where we're at, Chairman. It's up to you and the board whether you want to allow Mr. Lee the opportunity to make his comments. Uh, I find nothing improper about that, uh, given the fact that he wasn't able to provide those comments prior. But I do not want anybody on this board, or Mr. Lee for that matter, to feel as though, uh, uh, their considerations of the variances and the site plan issues was not what they were voting. So, with that, Chairman, I'll stop talking and let you and the board take over.
Yeah, I, um, of course, want to hear from Mr. Lee. Uh, I apologize. I didn't give you that courtesy after public comment, so, uh, the floor is yours, and then, uh, we'll go back to the board and see if, uh, they'd like to make a new motion.
Um, Chairman, I, I'll make my comments brief. I know there was a lot to address there. Um, uh, the first thing I'd like to say is that, um, I, I was not involved with this project when it first went to the community back in twenty-twenty-two. Um, when we finally got this application deemed complete, and it took some time to get it deemed complete, largely because there was a change in the zoning, uh, for the affordable housing component, which allowed us to, to go back and, and change the, the proposal. Uh, it wasn't just the addition of the six-story. We changed the, the prior setback from ten feet to the twenty feet that's being proposed tonight. We, we were in the process of dealing with J D Trucking, who is, um, our neighbor, and we were having open communications with them, and despite the fact that I noticed and scheduled for this matter, everybody on this board is aware that just because you're not on an agenda, doesn't mean you're going to get heard that night, the next meeting, or the meeting after. And in fact, I have a me, I have an email here, uh, on July twenty-fourth, a day before the meeting on the twenty-fifth, when this was originally scheduled, informing Councilwoman Prinzari, Councilman Bojano, and County Commissioner, uh, Billy O'Day, that we would not be proceeding that evening. In fact, I continued to adjourn this matter until we could find a time that was acceptable for everyone in the community to actually meet and hear on this. So while people kept saying that we never went back to meet with the community, that's just not true. We did meet with them on September sixth, and we presented the new application. Um, so I, I just wanted to spell that there wasn't any communication with, with anybody in the community. We were actively seeking. I have emails here from July twenty-fourth, August twelfth, August thirteenth, August fifteenth, August eighteenth, going back with Councilman Bojano's office, Mr. Capizoli, who spoke, all asking if we can meet, and the, the time we were finally able to meet was on the sixth. I was away during that time. Robert Vertabello from my office handled that meeting, and what he reported to me was there were only a few neighbors who attended the meeting. So I, I just wanted to spell any idea that we were trying to pull a fast one on anyone or not with, meet with the community. We always intended to do that. Um, I, I, I really just kind of want to leave it at that. Um, I, I think the project does speak for itself. Um, the multiple things were said, uh, regarding the, the site-specific conditions. Um, we don't have a neighbor, uh, to the, the, uh, the east, uh, west of us. We have an industrial facility. We've accommodated to the, the buildings to the, the west of us. We are building within our property line and sending it back to match the street and the sidewalk that is, uh, that was already constructed on the site. This board has heard and has adopted a redevelopment plan for the Pacini site for sites that are far larger than the one that is proposed this evening. We are in keeping with the R-three, and as I said, adding the, uh, complying with the affordable housing overlay is something that is, uh, consistent with the master plan and something that I think makes this a far better project. Now, I say all of this not because I'm asking the board to, uh, to reconsider this this evening. I think based on everything we've heard, it might be best if we go back and have another meeting with the community. I don't know if the board would entertain a journey in this until we do that, uh, to move this forward, uh, but I, I, I just, I, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we did make extensive efforts to reach out to people for over two and a half months to try and schedule a meeting.
Alright, thank you, counsel. Um.
But Chairman, just for purposes of record, uh, for both the board and Mr. Lee, I don't doubt that there were community meetings, and we've gone over the requirement and what the statute can require in terms of reaching out and speaking to the community. Uh, the reality of the matter is, as we sit here tonight, the application was denied because there was a motion to approve, and the vote was three-three. Under the law, that means the application was denied. So, Mr. Lee is free, obviously, to go back into the community, talk to the community, and attempt to address whatever Mr. Lee and his team want to address. But as it stands this evening, the application was voted on and denied by this board this evening.
And to your point, counsel, as you said.
And to your point, counsel, as you said earlier, that we had you reference one twenty-four Glenwood, which is apples and oranges. But they, the only thing that's comparable is that it, uh, that there was a reconsideration. And I I love, love, love Mr. Lean's instincts. And his willingness to re-go out, make the extra effort, that's Jersey City. And meet with the community because as far as I'm still concerned, it's a republic for the people, by the people, with the people and not a technocracy. Thank you.
So Santo, just to be clear, um. The motion did not pass. We have not moved to deny the application. We could entertain a new motion.
On a motion to approve, a three-three vote. The application is denied.
Okay, understood. Um, so Mr.
Mr. Chair, we do, as we've done recently, have a reconsideration in a not distant future.
That's up to the applicant. If the applicant wants the board to reconsider, but let's be clear what the board would be reconsidering. The board would be or would be reconsidering whether or not the applicant satisfied their proofs. With respect to both. The site plan and the variances sought, so. The positive and negative criteria of the variances being sought. And the site plan issues is what would be reconsidered by this board. If Mr. Lean so chose to seek that. Relief from the board.
So Santo. I do have one question, um. As far as a reconsideration goes. If Mr. Lean reached out to the community, met with the community again. And then came back for a reconsideration. Are we. Bound by the original. Design and test.
Yes. Yes, the record is what it is.
Okay.
The fact that he goes back into the community is not really relevant to. What was denied and the relief being sought. So. He can. Come back in, make a substantial change based on his meetings with the community. Maybe add another parking space, something of that, but then that's something else. That's not a reconsideration.
Yes.
Reconsideration is exactly what we heard the last time as far as. We think the board missed the mark in plain English. Here's what the statutory criteria was. Here was the testimony for the variances that we were requesting. Here's how we addressed the site plan. Can you look at it and see if? You made a mistake.
Okay, understood.
And 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 counsel, I just want to be clear on the record. If we do come back for a reconsideration and a seventh member. Reviews the transcript or watches the video, they're allowed to vote on that reconsideration?
That would be true.
Okay, so. The motion has not passed, um, Mr. Lean.
And the application was denied, Chairman.
The application was denied, uh, Mr. Lean, I think we're crystal clear here.
Understood.
And, um. I think we'll move on with our night then, as, uh. I think you're gonna as well, um, so I appreciate your time. I appreciate the the applicant's time and the public's time. Um. It is seven twenty-six, uh, Mike, let's get you a ten-minute break and, uh, we'll come back under new business. And, uh, we'll be back at seven thirty-six.
Thank you for the board's time.
All right, if we could, let's come to order again, please. Okay, so let's move on to new business. We have item ten is discussion of annual planning board reorganization. I'd like to start things off with, uh, the position of secretary. Uh, I would like to nominate. Cameron Black and Matt Ward as Kim, how are we referring to it? Co-Secretary?
Uh, deputized.
Okay. So we'll go, uh, Cameron as secretary. And, uh, Matt Ward as deputy secretary.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, so, uh.
Hearing non-closed nominations.
I'm sorry, what?
Nominations are closed.
Okay, hearing none, nominations are closed, um. So I would entertain a. Vote, right Santo, we don't have to open up for public comment on this, right?
Nope.
So I'll entertain a roll call, please.
Um, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
You know how we feel about Cameron and Matt? You guys have been phenomenal, uh, on the board and a great pleasure to work with now almost, I I don't even know. Nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fifteen year, I have no idea. And, um, you guys have always just been, um. Helpful, uh, diligent, uh, intelligent, uh, and hard work ethic. And so I absolutely will vote yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lipsky?
Dino, Dr. Gonzalez, I vote wholeheartedly aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye, 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 all the way to the top.
Okay, Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Yeah, you two are the best person I would vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Absolute aye.
Okay, Commissioner Torres?
Really aye.
Thank you. Chairman Langston?
Yeah, um, I I couldn't ask for two better guys in there, um, uh, you. The board has no idea how much I rely on these two, uh, behind the scenes, so, uh, absolutely, it's an aye for both of you.
Thank you. Motion carries all in favor to, uh. Designate Cameron as secretary and Matt Ward as deputy secretary.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Uh, so let's move on to vice chair. Uh, I would like to nominate, uh, Commissioner Gonzalez as vice chair.
Second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any other nominations?
The best.
Okay, hearing none, nominations are closed. Could we have a roll call, please, Cam?
Okay, um, so I will be skipping Dr. Gonzalez on roll, uh, and going to Commissioner Lipsky.
Why, he can vote for himself.
Oh, really? Okay.
This is America, baby. First votes always for yourself.
Little narcissistic, but yeah, it makes sense. Okay. Vice. Uh, on a roll, uh, for approval of Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez, uh, Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, now I feel bad and I don't know what to say. I do want, I could have stayed. I do want to help, uh, but okay, I would I.
Good, good choice. I I would have done the same. Commissioner Lipsky?
Pleasure serve, it's a pleasure serving with Dr. Gonzalez. He's a. Friend, a, uh, valued colleague, and I vote aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
C, C, C. That's, that's I in Spanish. Aye, 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 aye.
And, uh, Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Yeah, it's a capital I.
Okay. Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Torres?
Um, to Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez, I just want to, um. Really, everything that you do in Jersey City, whatever you do in the community. Um. It'll be a lot more than the son's board and, um, I'm so glad that you accepted this. And to take this term. And, um. I really appreciate you, uh, and I want to thank you utmost, uh, very knowledgeable, very down to earth. And you've been a, uh. Something to look forward to, um. Meeting on this board and, uh, with that, I brought a very big eye for you. Thank you.
Thanks, brother.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, Doc, um. You've been with me from, you know, day one, uh, even before I got to the board. I appreciate your insight. Um. I I know it's, you know. Believe me, I know.
I know it's, you know, believe me, I know it's a heavy lift for you. You're a busy man. And I absolutely cherish every, you know, every meeting that you're here and, you know, I rely on you immensely. So I'm happy to vote aye.
Thank you, brother.
All right.
Motion carries all in favor to designate Dr. Gonzalez as the vice chair for 2024.
So I'm obviously not gonna go the Dr. Gonzalez route here and
I'd like to do the motion for chair.
Commissioners, I'd like to nominate the chairman, current chairman Langston.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination in a second. Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, nominations are closed. Could we have a roll call, please?
Hey, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I feel like these nominations are crazy because we're become all family. And at some point, you know, we have to give up the reins and move on. But, you know, I have to, obviously, I have to say Commissioner Langston and I are have been friends for a very, very long time before we were co-commissioners on this board. He's one of the most respected people in the community. I think everyone knows that. And he's a, he's a force to reckon with. I have a feeling that there's a lot more that he's going to be doing for the community. And really for the, maybe even for the state, I don't know. But he's, he's such a pleasure to work with. He knows, and you guys know, he directs this board brilliantly. He knows, he knows the laws, the rules inside and out. And when he doesn't, he never has a problem asking for direction. And so with a huge pleasure, I vote aye for my friend.
Thank you, Doc. I appreciate it. Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it goes beyond the if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Certainly, it's, it excels that, meaning the commissioner of the role and the person in it. Chris Langston, and it's a pleasure to serve. And he is a guy, just for public knowledge, that even if we disagree, he agrees to disagree amenable. And so it's a real pleasure. We have good critical conversation. He makes things clearer for me, and I vote wholeheartedly aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Chairman, for everything from teaching me about bike racks, bike lanes, and teaching me how important it is in Jersey City. I learned a lot from you. And to this day, I'm still learning a lot of things in Jersey City. But thank you for everything you do. I, David Cruz, look up to you. Because when you speak, you speak very well. And you know, I think you're one of the smallest people I ever met. So I vote aye.
Thank you, David. Yusef's not in the room with you, is he?
No, he went to Atlantic City where everybody else had left me here.
Okay, good.
Only thing is, no Spanish for, no Spanish for the chairman.
Well, he knows his things. He knows about everything, you know, I listen to him all the time and I and he's very smart about the buildings, even though I go to the building and check it, he finds things out. If it's not him, it's Eddie that finds everything out.
Okay, Commissioner Green.
I can't imagine any other chairman but you at this point. You lead with what's the word effortlessly? So a definite aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Since in this board, more than six years, I know only one person who is so courteous. He guides us in everything. And it's a pleasure to work with him. Even I meet him outside the board meeting, he's so courteous, and I miss his dog, my goodness. Always I used to see him in the park with the dog. And I think there is nobody as good as him. He knows everything about this board and everything. And then, of course, I'm going to aye.
Thank you, Doctor. Commissioner Torres.
So being born amazing, as you said, I think I have to take really for the last thing, and Dr. Gonzalez, vice chair, to make you two guys officially honorable lifetime Jersey City residents, because you guys really, really care for Jersey. And to my brother in the building trades. You know, I always tell you, you do an outstanding job. Here, you do an outstanding job workforce and then industry. But most of all, you I would never thought that you wasn't born and raised in Jersey City because you love the city. And without a doubt, and then anybody wants to argue me with the point of how long you've been here? There's no argument.
Twenty, twenty-one years for the record, twenty-one.
Good. And I wanted to say that for you and the doctor, the both of you make me feel that way. So that's Chris, a big aye for you. Thank you for, and thank you, thank you for your service. Appreciate you, everything you're doing. Thank you.
And Chairman Langston.
I'm going to abstain. As I always do.
That is a six favor, one abstention, motion carries to elect Mr. Langston as Chairman Langston for the year 2024. And I'll say, before I suppose Matt follows me up, but it is always a pleasure to be working with you, Chris. And you know, you have this like stoic, like wisdom that, you know, you, you don't break, you know, your your emotions and you're always leading with just a very rational, intelligent hand of reason. So for that, I'm always very happy to have you as the chair.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I'll just take the opportunity to say, thank you for the nomination. I'm proud to be serving again as the deputy secretary. I want to thank the chairs for your hard work and leadership over the years. I think it's been about almost ten years for the record there, Dr. Gonzalez. And, and I want also to thank the rest of the commissioners as well. You guys, everyone here. Every other week, we're here and you guys do a tremendous job. Thank you for your commitment.
All right, thanks, Matt. And thank you, everybody. I appreciate the kind words. It's always it's always nice to hear. Once a year, that's it. No more than that. All right, so if we could, let's move on to item eleven is the review and discussion of the 2024 planning board meeting calendar. One thing to note is, let me just bring this up so I don't misspeak. Okay, so everybody's had a chance, I hope, to look at the calendar. One special note on the bottom is a new addition to this year's calendar. All meetings will be being, begin at five thirty PM Eastern and will take place in the boardroom of Holloway Building at Four Jackson Square. So it's happening, everybody. Yeah, we finally get to see some of you in person. There's commissioners that have come and gone over the past few years that I've never seen. So I'm excited, you know, to get back in person, see everybody in person, all the applicants, the attorneys, the public, everybody. And, you know, carry on like we used to. So does anybody have any questions, comments, problems with the calendar?
No, just chairman, our current planning board meeting notices. And for the future, it says, no new matin send under advisories. It says, no new matter involving an applicant will be started after eleven. Might that need to be changed to ten?
Um, to be honest, I haven't seen that. I haven't dug that far into it. I appreciate that, Steve. So Cam, I'll, I'll leave that up to you. Just update to our current policy, no new testimony. No new applications will be opened after ten. And we will not hear any testimony after eleven.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I see where they're, they're looked, yeah, I see where you see that on the agenda. It, it also says after that, you're looking at the agenda, right?
Yeah, but right, but also going towards particularly in public, I mean, it'll, I'm just saying it should reflect what we do. So for the next couple of meetings for this year and then for next year, should say will not be started after ten. And if we, when we say at ten PM, the board, I did see the next line, I read it.
Okay.
Died and advised. Maybe we say, I don't know, keep it at ten, but because that's kind of like we do anyway. So it ends at ten and we'll kind of advise that unless you feel different.
Commissioner, it should be changed. It should state that no new matter involving applicant will start after ten. And at nine o'clock, the board chair will advise everybody whether that's what we've been doing.
Okay, yeah, so shift one hour. Got it.
And so everybody understands what that means, obviously, is exactly how we've been practicing. We will go past ten if we're in the middle of an application and the board wants to continue that application past the ten o'clock hour. But we will not start an application after ten o'clock. And obviously, that's a policy and procedure of the board. But if the board is so inclined, we've got an application that's going to take fifteen minutes and the board wants to grant that courtesy to an applicant and their team. The board is always free to do that or not do that.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that, Santa. I appreciate it. You know, there's been a handful of times where I ask a little more of you guys than I usually do. And we're never going to go past eleven again. Let's just make that crystal clear. But you know, if, if there's something quick that we don't have to drag somebody out now that it's, you know, we're back in back in person. I'd hate to drag somebody out for something that takes ten minutes. And, you know, I'll certainly reserve that right. But, you know, again, it's up to the board. The board can just get up and walk out if they wanted to on me. So that's fine, too. But so, all right, any other questions about the schedule?
Yeah, I just, Commissioner Torres, I was just, for the record, I was waiting for my wife to come back into the room so she could hear this, you know, but one of the dates falls on my anniversary. And for the love that I have for my marriage, I will let you guys know right now that I will not be at the meeting. Okay, we'll keep that on the record. There she goes. She gave me a yes.
He doesn't want to sit next to you that night?
And he bring her, bring her. All right, so if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the 2024 calendar.
Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt and accept the planning board, 2024 planning board meeting calendar.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
Okay, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. You're muted, Commissioner Cruz. Okay, Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. And Chairman Langston.
I can't wait to see you guys in person again. It's gonna be great.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you, everybody. So let's move on to item twelve is the board attorney contract. I, do we nominate this? I don't know how we handle, I forget how we handle this, but I'll I'll entertain a motion to accept the board attorney contract for Santo Alampi for 2024. Okay, motion and a second for Santo. Do we have any other nominations? I guess I should ask at this point.
Well, who's nominating? Is it you, Jim?
Yeah, do I have to have an attorney license or?
All right, Cam, let's, let's do a roll call for Santo's contract, please.
Okay, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm sure everybody agrees with me, but Santo, there's many, many, I mean, I dare to say almost every meeting that I'm at where there's this guidance that you hear coming from your mouth. And it makes it all better. It clears things up. You've done that without manipulation, without duress for us. You've given us clear legal advice that then you say, I'm going to stop talking and I'm going to let the chairman and the board, the commissioners decide. And it is just so, for me personally, it is, it is, it is when you, when you do leave on occasional meetings where you are, you know, agendas where you have to leave, I actually get, I think a lot of blood pressure goes up a little bit because I don't know who I'm going to ask for help if I need to. And it's just such a reassuring feeling to have you there. You're a friend, you're a great guy to top everything off. But I think that you're the most qualified person to sit in that chair. And I'm, I'm super happy to have you as my board counsel. And I vote aye, of course.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, so I've gotten to work with Santo over the last year and eleven months. And it's been a great experience. I think he's a excellent planning board attorney. So, Your Honor, or I mean, your chairman, I rest my case. So I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Attorney, I feel comfortable. Thank you for protecting us. Thank you for when we're getting attacked by other people. Thank you for rushing in there and doing what you do best. But I also found a good attorney and your, your sister's a good attorney for the board, too. She's the backup. Remember, she's a good, she's a good attorney. But I vote aye. I vote a hundred percent. But don't forget about his sister. So when he's out, you want his sister in.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Yeah, you know, Santo, you are like a teacher and we are all students. So if you make a mistake, you are there to protect us. And we appreciate that. And of course, you have done such a good job in all the occasions when you give all your advice and everything. That's the best thing. Of course, I'm going to vote aye.
Commissioner Green.
I appreciate Santo to the fullest. I love the way he protects us. I love the way he brings order, how he just kind of bring everything in perspective as to what's law, what's, what's, what's legal and what's law. And very sharp. I love it. I'm obsessed with when you start like chopping people down and like putting everything in perspective. So it's definitely aye for me.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah, I just want to say, all the years on this, on this board and stuff, and a couple of councils that we got to see. Mr. Lampy, you have given us the best guidance I have seen. Guidance where you would tell us exactly what's law. And sometimes you let us know what we might be missing in an indirect way. And then you give us the respect like Dr. Gonzalez said. I leave it up to the chairman and the commissioners now. And I always appreciate when I hear you say that. You're not putting words in our mouths and let us know what the law is. And then you let us make our decision for Jersey City. For the Jersey City, Jersey City, and anybody out there that's listening, this is a man you better hold on to. And keep him around for as long as you can. Because he is good for the city. We'll give you a big aye for that. Thank you.
Chairman Langston.
Eddie, can Eddie, can we uh? Put Santo in as honorary?
He's a shitty guy. Hey, man, I'm doing it tonight, babe.
You just handed him out all over the place.
They're not going that easy, but I'm in.
I, I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna echo everybody else's sentiment. Santo, uh. Uh, obviously. You know, you're our guy. Um, you, you, you have that way about you that, you know, you know the law. Inside and out. But you somehow find a way to explain it. To, to this dummy. Um. And I, I appreciate that and, and you definitely have a. A Jersey way about. Telling us what's right and wrong and um. You know, you, you do have our backs a hundred percent, but you also have the back of the law. And, and that's what we decide on and uh. You know, I've been through. God, Doc, Eddie, how many? One, two? One, three, four, is it four? Yeah, you're probably our, the fifth attorney I've worked with here and um. They save the best for last, so uh, I appreciate uh, everything you do for us. Uh, absolute eye for me.
Okay. To everybody, I gotta tell you, the words are just, they're moving. To hear people talk about you and respect what you do. It, it's so, it's so moving and I'm not an emotional person, but uh, I gotta tell you, it just. It makes me want to do it and. You guys know this. I practice all over the state. I'm in front of boards every day. And you guys don't realize the sacrifice you make, the time you put in. I go in front of the bench and I am happy to say I represent the Jersey City Planning Board. And I tell every judge the same thing. This is the hardest working board in the state of New Jersey. And it's not even close. The time that you guys are putting in, the agendas that you are tackling, what is happening in this city. The public can't appreciate what you guys are putting into this. They just can't. They think that, you know, okay, it's one matter when they show up or a couple of matters. We have a couple of members of the public that are here with us. Every other Tuesday night for six hours. But when you're giving up your Saturday and your Sunday plowing through these packages. We don't get them in paper anymore, but. I used to get them delivered to my office. You're talking about ten, twelve, fifteen inches. Of paper. That you guys go through and read. And do not get compensated. Phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. Everybody in the city should recognize that you guys are volunteers and you're giving time. Because as Commissioner Torres said. You guys love this city and you should, and you should be proud of the city and you should be proud of what you do. I'm just trying to help everybody and make sure you guys move this city. To its best possible vision of itself. We've got an amazing staff. They care. But you guys are the backbone. You care, you put in the work, you get no accolades for it. And you deserve it. You deserve the accolades. You don't have to do this, but you do it because you love it and. Uh, the sacrifice is immense. It's not missed by me. Uh, I thank everybody. I thank you for your work. I thank you for your time. I'm happy to put in the work. Because you guys put in the work and it is a joy and it means the world to me. So thank you.
Thanks, Santo. Appreciate it.
I think a black robe for Santo.
Yeah, there you go.
I think a black robe for him.
It, it's funny, I, I forgot to say it. Um. You know, occasionally I, I have a conversation with a councilperson after the fact or. Something to that nature and uh. You know, they always say, where, where did you find that guy? That guy's dynamite. Where did you find that guy? It's Carmine's kid. That's all I got. It's Carmine's kid. Yeah, Santo, we appreciate you, buddy.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
As it relates to, once we're in person, what if? One. Say me, for example, can't be in person. Will I still have the option to do a Zoom if I can't be there like? In person or no, it's either you're in person or not?
Yeah, it's either in person or not. Um, I, I don't think we're gonna have the ability to do like a hybrid meeting. Um. So yeah, we're, we're one hundred percent in person or, or you're just not present and. You know, believe me, it, it's gonna be a stretch to. To get back to that grind that we used to do of, of being there on time and. You know. I'm gonna have to start or I'm gonna have to stop wearing sweatpants all the time, but. Oh my God, what am I gonna do? Uh.
Just make sure the dais is covered properly.
Have to walk in, you know, from behind a sheet or something. I don't know what's gonna happen, but um, we're gonna figure it out. It's a new room. It's a new uh. New spot and uh. Yeah, we'll get there. Um. I, I don't think uh, you know, it's gonna be rocky at the beginning. There's gonna be a lot of new. Things that we're tackling in person. Um. You know, the last time we met in person, we were still using paper. And um, you know. Thankfully, I tried for years to get rid of that paper and uh, it took a pandemic to do it, but um, we're there.
I don't mind if you bring it back.
I'm gonna work with you on, on. Um, so yeah, we'll uh. We'll iron everything out. I'm gonna try and get over to, to planning and do a, a walkthrough before that initial meeting. Um. You know, try and report back to everybody. And uh, it's a good thing we got away from paper. My dog ate a few of those plans. Yeah. Anyway.
I think Cameron, uh, I think his cat wants to run for something. He keeps making cameos. Anyone know cat?
They want to get fed, which I won't be able to do when we're in person, so. Yeah.
Same here, Cam. All right, if we could, let's move down uh, down the list. Item thirteen, uh, the precision reporting contract. Um, I. Wholeheartedly will entertain a motion to approve this contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to uh, prove uh, precision reporting.
Okay, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez. But uh, of course, I am gonna vote I. This guy is amazing. I have no idea how he does this. Uh, it's, I mean, if you guys think that the uh, just for the public, you think that we're tired. Um, as, as the commissioners and, and uh. And, and Santo, um, I ca, I mean, this guy is. Uh, dictating, uh, typing every single word. Uh, that Chairman Langston taught, says and all our commissioners say and Santo, who can. Talk a lot like he, as we want him to and then the public and the president, I don't, I don't know how my man does it. I really don't. Um, and you know, and then he, we only take a couple of breaks. Um. Phenomenal, phenomenal professionalism, uh, phenomenal work ethic. I, I don't know of a time when he's not, hasn't been here actually. Um. And uh, of course, I gladly nominate. Precision. I would, I, I'm sorry, I would, I, sorry. Commissioner Lipsky.
In addition to all that, there's that cool backdrop, so uh, go with that. So I vote uh, an extraordinary. Attentiveness and perseverance and dedication and uh. I.
Commissioner Cruz.
Definitely I. I like the back.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Doc, I can't hear you, sorry. Not that I want to hear you say good things about me, but.
You are perfect for us, so I would die.
Commissioner Green.
I definitely I.
Commissioner Torres.
I like you. Definitely man of great character, well. Um. It's so hard sometimes just to sit here and even when we were live. And um, stay there and listen to these uh, cases, um. Pretty sure. Which sometimes I don't ask so many questions. Guys for that. But um. You stay there, never complain. And you do your job. And then afterwards, you show us all a lot of respect, like. You're like, well, you guys are good and you make me feel. About what we accomplished that day. And you're doing all the work. I can't stay still. You're like, fuck it along. Um, yeah, you're definitely great character. Out of town. And with that, I'm gonna vote a very big eye. Thanks for everything you do, buddy.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I mean, Mike and uh, obviously Bridget's not here, but um. Uh, Mike is, is like the unsung hero of this board. Um. He, he, he doesn't speak often, um. Which I, I would assume he's happy about, but um. You know, I, I've read back the transcripts. They're, they're dead on. They're amazing. Um. But I, I mean, just the, the fact that, Mike, you do not stop and I know I, I'm trying to speak slow so you get all this and you can read it later. Um. You know. The board sits here and, and. We just have the luxury of just listening sometimes. You know, I have. A cup of coffee here. I have my. You know, turkey and stuffing potato chips next to me. Mike, you don't have that. Like, I don't know how. You just do not stop working the entire time. Uh, it's amazing. And, and I appreciate everything you do, believe me. Um, it's no small task what you do and I, I don't think we uh, recognize that enough. So happily vote I.
All right, motion carries all in favor and um, as a secretary, uh, Mike and Santo, we are. Very happy and lucky to have you on the side of the city and not the other way around. So thank you.
Hey, thank you, guys. I just want to say I appreciate it. Uh, I've been coming here for thirteen years. I think about. So it's a long time and I've seen a lot of faces and, and Chris, everyone said a lot of good things about you already, so I don't need to say anymore. Obviously, this whole board's been great. You guys are good to me and, and Chris, you always think about me, which I very much appreciate because it's, it's not normal in a lot of places. We get forgotten about. Uh, it'd be good to see you guys. Uh, I'll try to bring a picture of my background. Oh, please, so everyone remembers who I am. All right, but uh, and on top of that, precision's been covering Jersey City for probably close to forty years now. And so uh, yeah, this board has kind of been doing its thing and, and we've been here all along, so we're glad to be coming back. Thank you.
No, we appreciate it, Mike. All right, so let's uh. Dispense with the pleasantries, I guess, and uh, get back to what we do. Let's call uh, item fourteen on the agenda is case P two zero two three dash zero zero four six. Is a site plan amendment with variances for two seventy eight Grant Street.
Okay, I'll be promoting Michael Higgins. Um. But while I do that, I do have an announcement. Uh, Mr. Wine. Did request to carry his one-year extension. It's listed as item. Um. Twenty-six on the agenda, case number P two zero two three dash zero zero five nine. Uh, address is one M L K Drive, uh, requested to carry to the uh, November twenty-eighth meeting. No preservation of notice needed. Um, no notice was required.
Okay, thanks, Cam.
So I'm promoting Stephen Joseph because actually there is no Michael Higgins in the audience, so. Stephen.
Um. And you know, any. Other attorneys out there, if you're down that list, uh. Mr. Wine is the uh, smartest man in the room tonight, I believe. Um. So. You know, I, I certainly don't think we're gonna get through everything tonight like uh, usual, but um. We'll give it a shot for you.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, unfortunately. Fortunately, you get me tonight and not Mr. Higgins. Um. Stephen Joseph for the applicant. Uh, thi, this was carried from a previous meeting. I think we confirmed notices then, but uh, we just reconfirm. We have them.
Thank you, counsel. Uh. That is correct. This matter has been carried as matter of fact. It was carried uh, since. The beginning of October with preservation of notice. I am in or see the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. Had the opportunity to review it. It appears to be in order. We can mark it as A one for the record.
All right, thanks, Santo. Um. Mr. Joseph, uh, always a pleasure to see you, but um. More importantly than seeing you, do we have your whole team here tonight?
We, we should have the whole team here tonight, so we have uh, Sam Bellamy or somebody from Dresner. Um, should be on and Jing Jun is our architect. Who I know was on at five thirty when it started. Um.
They're here, promoted them.
They're here. You promoted them. Okay. Great. Um, I don't see them in the, there's, we have a bunch of attendees tonight. Um, but Cam, you're saying you promoted them. Wonderful.
Okay, thank you, counsel. The floor is yours. Go ahead.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, Stephen Joseph for the applicant. We're going to try to be um, fairly quick tonight. Uh, we're here asking for an amendment for variance, the variances for height. Uh, height. We are requesting is one foot, seven and a quarter inches over what is permitted. We are going to bring Mr. Bellamy up first um, to do his brief testimony about it. And then Jing Jun will confirm uh, the plans and, and. And the architectural testimony to try to expedite this whole thing. So let's get Sam sworn in and um. Get moving.
Nice, Sam. Do you swear any testimony? You give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellamy, good evening. Always a pleasure. Um, I do have to ask, uh, we've qualified you in the past, but is your license current tonight?
Good evening. Yes, my license is current and in good standing as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Great. Um, so I am gonna share my screen and pull up the plans as I go through the variance request. Um, as you may recall, we, um, there was a previous hearing. Um, we're back at this board for a site plan amendment and also for a, a bulk C variance for the building height. Um, the building itself was actually constructed taller than what was approved back in twenty seventeen. And with that, it was also constructed taller than what is permitted in the zone one triangle development district of the Bright Street redevelopment plan. Um, I know there was some prior questions and, and confusion after the last testimony and we're starting fresh with this. Um, the plans were updated. This is the plan set dated October um, thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Um, and we did clear up the, the building height calculation. Um, building height is a very technical matter. Um, add in the elements of this being approved back in originally twenty seventeen. The area isn't, the property is in a flood zone and also um, the building being constructed taller than what was approved. Um, so the first thing we did was establish the average finish grade. Um, that's important in this case of uh, as building height is measured from the finish grade. Um, the property is in the flood zone, as I mentioned, so the base flood elevation um, shown here is nine feet. Um, zone one allows for the building height to be calculated from. The base flood elevation plus one, so that's why you're seeing this, this measurement start at the ten-foot elevation. Um, and then here you could see what we're requesting and what was constructed is a building height of forty-four point five five. Feet. Um, so that's two point five five feet greater than the forty-two feet permitted in zone one. Um, the previous uh, approved and um, project was at forty-two point nine five feet. Again, um, we want to make sure we are compare, comparing apples to apples here. Um, so we're showing both um, as being measured from the same finish grade and that same uh, base flood elevation plus one. So what we're requesting is two point five five feet of additional building height. Um, and that was what was actually increased here was an additional one point. Um, six feet or that one feet, seven and a quarter inches. Um, six feet or that one feet, seven and a quarter inches is what was actually constructed greater than what was previously approved. Um, I think the the bulk C variance can be granted here and that the benefits would outweigh the detriment. Um, the building is is still in scale, the facade was. Constructed in a manner that you still have the window placement similar to what was previously approved. Um, and then now you have a little bit increased floor to ceiling height on each floor. Um, so I do think the additional two point five feet is um. Wouldn't really be disconcertable and visible to the to the public. Um, and again, that the benefits would substantially outweigh the detriment here. Um, the project itself does promote the purpose of the municipal land use law. Again, this is an appropriate use and development of the property. I think that the building that was approved and constructed. Um, would promote a desirable visual environment and complete the streetscape here on this triangle. Triangle block. Um, I don't see any substantial detriment to the general welfare here. Again, we're talking about two point five five additional feet of building height. I don't think it will have a substantial impact as this is a unique lot. Um, with two frontages and triangular shape, so each lot really does have a hundred percent lot coverage, so you don't have any. Impacts to any open space areas. Um, likewise, I don't see a substantial impairment to the tenant and purpose of the zone planner zoning ordinance. I tried to be brief there to really cover what the variance request was, but I'd be happy to go into any more detail if necessary.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bellamy. I, yeah, I have no question on the deviation. Anybody else? All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
All right, let's get Jing Jun sworn in and qualified. Um, just to confirm the the prior approved and then what's being proposed.
Hi, Jing Jun, how are you?
Hi.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you spell your name, please?
Jing Jun Z L Z H O U.
Thank you.
This is good evening. Um, we've qualified you in the past as well. Your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
All right. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you bring back the elevation again? Yeah, we've talked about this last time, but I just want to reiterate. The the building was built one feet per floor extra compared to what we designed, so. It's very difficult for the client to remove the top floor or top two floor to to be in the conformity. That's why we're requesting this variance and all the windows are. Taller than what they, what we initially, well, actually they are in the same proportion as what we initially designed. And removing a few extra inches, one that the window won't fit if we just remove extra inches from each floor. Um, otherwise, I think that's that's it.
Great, thank you. That'll conclude our direct testimony here.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, and counsel, that's your presentation. That's the end of your.
That concludes our testimony. I do apologize to the board for all the confusion surrounding this application.
Okay, understood. Um, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application. Please raise your hand and if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
There is someone from the public wishing to speak. I move to goes on this. Item, I move to go to the public session.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed.
Yeah, so I'll jump in here. Chairman Langston, thank you. So this this application and it's just went on on here. The this application received a stop or or this project received a stop record order. Um, and and they have, they have abided by that stop order. Um, other than I think some very minor. Uh, work to make it weather tight. Uh, or or shore it up a little bit while it was waiting to come before. The the board here tonight, they've been. Abiding by that stop recorder. We went through the the work that had changed out in the field to. Um, present you the these materials here tonight. Um, there was another change that wasn't put on the record that I'll just mention as well. It was just a turning of the stairs. On Bright Street, which staff was in support of. Um, and and was in leading up to kind of finding out the rest of these items. Um, and. I'm here for any other further questions. Uh, we believe this application is rather straightforward, but if you have any questions for staff, I am here.
All right, thanks, Matt. Anybody? Any questions for Matt?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two three dash zero zero four six as presented to the board tonight.
Motion made and seconded for approval.
Okay, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
I just want to offer a look at I appreciate. They they come to us and then act towards what we. Friends and then they came back again.
Can you start over? I'm sorry, I'm just losing. You're kind of in and out. Apologize.
I I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate Matt and the snow that they did applies by the stop work order that they did. Um, and then, you know, they came to us and we had some issues with the plants or some little minor stuff on the. Package and they came back and they actually still stay by the stop work order. We kind of like upsetting when these things happen to us, but you know what? I always took a stand before. But obsess me more is when big developers get away with things that they try to do purposely. And sometimes, and I always say it on the record, is these little developers. Uh, little smaller builders. That um. Sometimes get punished harder. It's a shame. And we and this board. Made that clear that we don't like that. We don't stand for that. If they did. This developer decides to put the end, they know what they have in Jersey City. We stick by what we approved and we hope that it helped it. Um, in good faith, though. I saw this project. It looks good and it's looking good. And with that, I just voted big eye for it. I am in support of that moving forward.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Doctor Desai. Commissioner Green.
I.
And Chairman Langston.
So. Let me just. Get this off my chest. Uh, I know. You know, me and Commissioner Torres, we're both in construction. We're both union members and. It it just. It it makes my blood boil when I see something that wasn't built according to plan. You know, I feel like. And. You know, Santo stopped me if I'm I'm running amok here, but um. You know, I feel like. Union projects. Somehow. Are are held to a higher standard. You know, something like this on a union project wouldn't fly. It wouldn't happen. And I. You know, I understand it's. Every project can't be a union project. But again, the this. This is unacceptable in my world. But that's, you know, these are all personal issues. If if this had come to us in the beginning. Ask for a deviation on height, you know, it might be a different story. Um, I I don't. Think it's it's an egregious amount of height. Um, so. You know, I'm reluctantly. Voting I tonight. You know, I hate to see this and. I I don't know how many times. I I can say that. You know, there's a sentiment out there. A lot of the public just doesn't trust developers. And. You know, this doesn't help that case. I don't think all developers are are. You know. Obviously, it's a business. They're in it for the money, but um. You know, I I don't think they're all evil. Like like a lot of people do. Um, but this doesn't help that case. So, you know, reluctantly, I am going to vote I. And let's move on with our lives, guys.
Motion carries all in favor on a motion approved.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item fifteen. It's case P two three dash zero seven one is a conditional use for six thirty-eight Communipaw Avenue.
Uh, Mr. Nelson is sitting in for Zachary. Cameron.
Okay, promoted Mr. Nelson and Sir James.
All right, Mr. Nelson, you have the floor.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Rodney Nelson, Russell Amory and Ross, on behalf of Kansas Group LLC. Uh, the first and only witness testifying for the board this evening on behalf of Kansas will be the architect, Sir James L. Robinson. License number one one two six six. Uh, I think we have him pulled up, right?
We do.
Yep. And then if we could just confirm, notice was carried from the last meeting.
Thank you, counsel. Good evening. I am and receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. Respect the application at six thirty-eight Communipaw. Had the opportunity to review it. It was noticed for the prior meeting and carried through tonight with the preservation of that notice. It does appear to be in order, so Chairman, you can go ahead and mark it as A one for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Um, so yeah, this is an application for a micro dispensary proposed location of six thirty-eight Communipaw Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. Lot seven, block seventeen, nine oh five and Ward F. Um, no consumption area. Um, I with that, I'll turn it over to Sir James Robinson.
I see two of them here. I seen one of them. We'll turn on a video.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Um, I just want to swear in before you go, okay? If you could raise your red hand.
Yes, sir.
Swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you spell your name, please?
My name is Sir S I R. James. L. Robinson, R O B I N S O N, like Jackie Robinson.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, good evening. Um. I don't believe we've qualified you in the past. If you could just go over your. Your licensing and your educational background, please.
Okay, I. Earned a Bachelor of Architecture degree in nineteen sixty-four. Southern University, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I have a master's from Pratt Institute, New York City, nineteen seventy-four. I've taught at New York Tech. I've taught at NYU, Medgar Evers. And. I've practiced, I've been in the field sixty-two years. My my license is current and shall remain current.
All right, thank you, sir. I would. Demio is more than qualified tonight, so take it away.
Thank you. We are, our our client is proposing to. Take a piece of property at six thirty-eight Communipaw Avenue. And convert that to a. A center for cannabis distribution. In fact. Uh, this location. It has a. A a front yard, a a front parking area, which is which is seventy-six feet in depth. The square footage of the building is sixteen hundred and twenty square feet. And when you put the load factor in, one person per sixty feet is what the code allows, so. This the maximum capacity would be twenty-seven people. The structural calculation is three B as in boy. The lots, uh, lots one oh seven B. And one oh seven D. As I mentioned previously, this is a restaurant, so most of our work will be demolishing and removing. Equipment that was in the restaurant like deep fryers, woks. And three compartment sinks. We will be adding. We we're we're taking out part of the plumbing fixtures. We're going to convert it to one one toilet rather than two. Um, that's on our our plan A one oh one. We will also. Be uh. Taking out, leaving the what was a cooler. We're using that space to store or to to work the marijuana packages. We've also taken out the front counter and created open space. Um, and and our main concern with this project is the fact that. It has a. A building to its right. That is actually the same motif. It's got the nice. Uh, awnings that are green, that are used to to shield the the heat from from the space. Both buildings have that, and so we will maintain where we are or what we're presenting. We don't plan. To. Put in lighted signs. We're going to use signs that are created within Taglio. You can read them, but you won't be able, we we're not waving our hands to say, everybody, we're here at night. There is also in the front of this building a strip for landscaping. And and I would certainly suggest to my client. That that landscape would be enhanced so that it provides a softer approach to the building itself. It's a one-story structure. We will not change the face of the building, but now it has a. A plethora of signs and notices and all kinds of thing in the windows. We are going to remove those and render the windows translucent. Up to the level of six feet from the sidewalk, so. That means that we won't have. People out of curiosity. Walking along in front of the in front of the building, off the street seventy-six feet, peering into the space. Um, the building next to us that has the same brick, the same the same motif with the awning. We will maintain that same kind of of a. More to to show what we're doing. I I I'm reluctant to go into real deep. Conversation because I've I've waited here fifteen hours for this opportunity and I know you've been working. This and you know, we we we're all somewhat tired at this point. But the reflected ceiling plan illustrates that we'll be we'll be in we'll be installing. High hats. Or or downlights that are incandescent to give us a soft. Kind of a light. It's not a nightclub. It's not a it's not an exhibition. We want it to be dignified. On the power plant, we have also indicated that we're adding a number of power sources. So that we have flexibility in how we serve our clients and how we move, how we furnish the space. Um, we also have indicated. That. We are installing a, there's no plumbing occurring except capping plumbing fixtures where they capping where coming fixes were. Um, one of the things we are doing. Is we're putting in security doors. Where where uh. People would would be tempted to break into the to that area or that space. We have indicated that the exit signs are near the entrance. Safety is very important in 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 our minds. And we have counters and 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 sales. Safety is very important in the in in our minds, and we have counters and 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 sales. Uh booths that we have. People can come and and look at the product that they're interested in. And we don't want people. We don't want anybody standing around. What we have are we have seven parking spaces that I counted out there. And uh, we expect that I did not see a lot of foot traffic, so we hope that people will get there. Come and buy their goods and 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 not hang around outside the store. Um. Anything else I say would be repetitive, and I really I appreciate, gentlemen, that you got to us. Tonight because we were preparing for another long night with you. I almost feel like I know the board already. Um, thank you.
Sir, sir, honestly, I think we've heard uh. Probably twenty five of these at this stage in uh our careers here uh specific to cannabis, so. Chairman, I think as always, if we want to direct the witness to those items. That do concern us. I think he talked about the security doors and such. I think we need to hit the. Conditional use requirements under the uh the ordinance, but outside of that. Security, obviously, point of sale, I think, is where our focus generally is. Uh, we understand it's it's a. Rehab of existing space, and I appreciate it, sir, but. I I agree, we don't need to go into into that level of of detail.
And 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 at that point, we we still are not, we don't, we don't want to make our facade. Which is a storefront now. It's very nice. It's not a bad. It's not a a bad space. But we wanted, we we wanted deactivate. We want to de-emphasize that space. So that we we're good neighbors to the houses behind us and the buildings and the houses next door. And I'm I'm of the opinion that that's that that can be achieved, and it can be achieved aesthetically rather than putting up fences.
Uh, agreed, agreed, Mister Robinson. Um. Yeah, I I think uh. You know, I've seen everything that that this board really requires on making a decision like this. Um. So that said, uh, does anybody have any questions for Mister Robinson?
No.
No.
All right.
Chairman, the only question I have is if the signage will comply with the sign ordinances. I just need an affirmative on that.
Absolutely. It will be the 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 percentage allowed. On a facade, and it's just going to be that one sign above the door. And it's probably eighteen inches by five, so that's not that's ninety square inches, so it's not a it's not a large sign. And uh, we're 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 trying to remain succinct in in our approach. This is. There's no need for us to put in uh fluorescent lighting and all that kind of stuff. We're not, we're not advertising. We're just merchandising.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate it, Mister Robinson, and uh, okay, if you could, uh, please stop your screen share. A- and I gotta tell you, I I'm doing the math in my head. Did you graduate college when you were eight?
No, I'm eighty three years old now.
God bless you.
You look great.
God bless you. You look great.
Well, you look good.
And I'm enjoying every minute of being an architect.
Nice. That's always good to hear. Now it shows.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You made my wait worthwhile.
Um.
Another question. Where'd you get the Appalachian, sir?
I was knighted by the King of Sweden, King Gustav. I'm I'm a knight of Malta.
Oh, wow. Great accomplishments.
And and it's because I did some urban, I I designed a a new town in Sweden called Farsta, F A R S T A. And he would and and the king at that time was a prince. So he 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 grew bigger and so did I.
Interesting. Very interesting.
Thank you.
Cancel the rest of the meeting. We're just gonna. Talk to Mister Robinson for the rest of the night. This is fascinating.
All the years on his board and I get to greet a serve up.
Right?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um, are there any uh questions for Mister Robinson?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
Thank you and drive safely home.
Thank you. I'm home already. Um, okay, counsel, anything else?
Uh, no, I think that wraps up our presentation unless the board has anything specific, which I don't think they do.
Um, I don't. I've read the staff memo memo. I I. You know, you check all the boxes as far as what this board requires, so uh. You know, if there's no other questions from the board, um. I'll open it up for public comment at this time, so if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Chair, I see no public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed.
And this one is me as well.
Matt, this is yours as well.
Yeah, uh, good evening. Uh, so we prepared a staff memo. It's dated October second, twenty twenty three. Uh, we do have uh five conditions that staff recommends should it be there be a motion to approve this application. Um, I I don't believe it was mentioned on the record, but this is a a microbusiness as defined by the state law and our local ordinance. Um, they are uh doing an interior fit out of this existing building. And the Cannabis Control Board approved their application on March thirteenth, twenty twenty three. If uh there are no other questions, um, staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Matt. Anybody uh have a question for Matt? Anybody? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion. To approve case number. P twenty three dash zero, seven, one. As it was presented to the board tonight.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Uh, a motion to approve with conditions. Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez?
Uh, I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Thank Mister Nelson for his presentation. I'm very impressed with the regal presentation of Sir James. Um, it's rare that we get royalty to come before us, and I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Well, Sir James, it was a great presentation. I am a aye.
Okay, Commissioner Green?
Uh, pleasure hearing uh Sir James uh present tonight, and I vote aye.
Chairman Lexington?
Yeah, I mean, this is an easy one. Um, Sir James. Tick the box when he he's talked about being a good neighbor and uh. That's that's all we can ask, and um before I vote aye, I'm gonna do a deep dive tomorrow on uh Forsta. Gotta check this out. And uh, all right, thank you, everybody, and uh my vote is aye.
Motion carries uh six, four, one abstention on a motion to approve with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
James, you've done so much in your life. You're at that time where you're you're equal like with Biden and Trump, maybe run for president. God bless you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Yes, so can say say goodbye. You want to say goodbye?
Good night, gentlemen.
Thank you. Enjoy your night. All right, let's uh move on to. Item seventeen and ladies, by the way, uh. Move on to item seventeen is case P two, zero, two, three dash zero, zero, four. Is a preliminary and final major site plan for one eighteen to one thirty Monitor Street. Hey, Chuck, is there anyone else on your team you need up here?
I need uh, let's see, Sean Savage is my civil engineer and then Jen Palermo is the architect.
Hands up.
Okay.
Okay, so um, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley on behalf of the applicant while you are. Um, bringing them them up as panelists, uh. I'll start uh first there, although there are no deviations requested, uh being requested as part of this application, we did provide a a public notice, so I'd ask that that be. Reviewed and and marked into the record.
Thank you, Mister Harrington. I am receiving your affidavit of publication proof mailing with respect to the application. At one eighteen dash one thirty Monitor Street here in the city. Uh. It does appear to be in order. This is one of the rare occasions where the notice I'm looking at is for tonight's meeting, so. Uh, it does appear to be in order, and Chairman can mark it as A one for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel. Yeah, we're almost uh almost running in the black here.
Well, well, it's not not.
Don't laugh.
Bubble, but we 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 renoticed for tonight because we made a change uh since the last meeting. But we can all have positive thoughts.
We're trying.
So uh, yeah, the the application um before you uh is uh. It's by uh my my client who's the designated redevelopment of of the property. Um, and uh there is an existing eight-story building with seventy residential units with five parking spaces on the ground floor. And what we're doing uh tonight is we're proposing an addition uh to the the building. Uh, so it's it's, you know, kind of unique in that it's it's an addition, but it's an eight-story addition. Uh, you'll see during the presentation that that it uh it's a, you know, a good good uh chunk of land that we are providing, but it's. It all will take the property uh along along Monitor Street and and towards the south. Uh, we are going to provide for this eight-story addition with another seventy uh residential units. And then the change that we made since the last time this was listed on the agenda is that we are proposing a childcare uh center or use on the ground floor. That is a permitted use uh uh by the the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan. And this this property is specifically uh within the TOD North uh District, so um my client, um, it's a. He has i- is already developed uh on Garabrant Street, um, so this is a continuation of of what he's he's been doing down there. Uh, he also uh has a project um down uh further further south, uh the Baker Building. Uh, so he's invested in in the area and he, you know, this this we believe is is a, you know, another great addition um to to the development in this area. Uh, so as I stated, we're not asking for for any uh deviations as part of it. It's so it's it's uh it's as of right. Uh, and with that said, um, I'll move right into our presentation with Mister Savage is is going to uh. Just take you through the site so you can become familiar with it, and then uh Ms. Palermo will follow up.
Hi, Sean, I'll swear in.
Okay.
You raise your red hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Uh, Sean S E A N Savage S A V A G E.
Thank you.
Mister Savage, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Correct, it is.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
No, thank you. Uh, I let me uh just share share a screen here real quick. Uh. So you should be able to see, this is uh referring to, this is sheet three of the submitted site plan set. This is the geometry plan. Um, just to get reference to the site, uh as previously mentioned, the site is has frontage on Monitor Street. And it's addition, it's an addition to the building that's existing that is located uh on lot twenty six oh one. Uh, right to the, I guess, sort of to the east of this property. Um, and basically, we're adding, as just mentioned, an eight-story addition to this building. Uh, containing seventy units. Um, and it's going to be located on what what is currently lots twenty through twenty five, which is. Uh, just about uh point three acres. Um, the site is currently vacant, but um this is going to be developed here. Um, as part of this addition, the the entrance for the the main entrance of the existing building will be utilized for this. For this addition for the residential uses. Um, there are some additional uh doorways proposed along Monitor Street for uh transformer vaults. You can see here the electric utility room. And then um, uh, as previously mentioned, a major change from the last time uh the plans were submitted is that uh on the ground floor. Um, we are now proposing a childcare uh use, which is uh just shy of fifty two hundred square feet. Uh, that's going to have its own entrance here pretty much about midway through the addition. And um, and 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 that'll be a separate entrance, uh, you know, an administration desk for for people uh dropping their kids off. Excuse me. Uh, in in addition, there's going to be a little um some uh a co- coworking space up here. It's about seven hundred and just shy of nine hundred square, uh, sorry, just shy of eight hundred square feet. Um, there's additional bike storage room that's being proposed here. Um, that is going to contain uh an additional uh thirty five bikes, which will get us between the. Uh, combined, well, actually, for the additional seventy units, that would be the uh required number of bikes, storage. Uh, a package room here to the back corner of the building, and then also a gym, um, which is about thirteen hundred square feet. And then there's some space over here for um this new sport pickleball. Um, uh, and and then in addition to. What's being proposed here, obviously, all the residential is on the floors floors above. Uh, the residential use uh is noted here. You can see on the plan, the um, you know, as Bruce mentioned, there are no variances being requested, so the. The residential level of the building is is set back uh to the required setback here twenty five feet. Um, the first floor with the gym and and the uh package room, et cetera, that does extend to the. To the property line, but that's only on the uh the ground level. Um, as part of this development, um. We we are proposing a stormwater management system. If I can uh share another. Screen here. Give me a second. So now I'm I'm just sharing a sheet five from the submitted set. This is the utility plan. And uh, it's just a reference. So the the existing building uh has its own underground uh storage system. As part of this new addition to to uh meet the required uh percent reductions uh for the city and and DEP requirements. Um. A second here. We are uh also proposing an underground system here. It's going to be located, uh, you know, obviously back underneath the building here. Um, and um, that's going to have a backflow preventer to, you know, prevent any backflow coming back into the building from that system. Um, very similar system what we have existing already, uh, but this one here handles just the new addition of the building. Uh, the rest of utilities are all going to connect to existing utilities out in Monitor Street. Um. Sanitary, water, electric, all going out towards, uh, actually, sorry, I shouldn't say the sanitary and the electric are connecting. The water actually is connecting uh into the existing building. Um. There, so you see if um. That that's that's kind of the the bulk of it. Again, it's it's uh no variances. It's a total of seventy units uh on this new addition. Um, uh, one thing that might be good, the the uh in terms of trash collection, this addition of the building will utilize a trash. Compactor and trash rooms that are located in the existing building. Um, and uh the proposed addition uh is not uh proposing any additional parking. There are. The uh five stalls that were installed as part of the uh original, the other building here. Um, and we are providing a streetscape with some trees and uh tree planting grates along the frontage. Um, and. And, and uh, a couple of light poles uh, as needed as well for that sidewalk. And I think that pretty much covers the direct testimony at this point.
Yes, a- any questions for Mr. Savage?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Savage. Um, yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else? I, I feel like we've entered a new stage on this board. Uh, we heard pickleball for the first time tonight. I, I don't think it's gonna be the last, so.
I know it's not.
I know. Okay, so uh, if there's no questions, Council, go ahead.
Okay, then I'm gonna uh, move right on with uh, Ms. Palermo to take you through the architecture.
Jennifer, do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, could you please state and spell your name?
Uh, Jennifer Palermo, P A L E R M O.
Thank you.
Ms. Palermo, uh, always a pleasure. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Jennifer, take us away.
Okay, I will share my screen. Uh, oh, I lost it. One second. Okay, so, uh, as Mr. Harrington um, stated earlier, you can see by this line here, um, everything here to the right is uh, the existing building at one thirty monitor. Um, this building was completed about a year and a half ago, um, and is fully occupied. Um, when we were designing um, this building, there was um, a glimmer of hope that we would be able to acquire the lots next door. So when we laid out our uh, circulation, we um, located our elevator and our stairs in such a way that we were able to um, use these, this infrastructure to serve uh, the potential addition. So um, so our eight-story seventy-unit addition only requires one stair. Um, now it will then serve this whole building, um, which will now have three separate um, stairs and means of egress from the upstairs floor. But also, as previously stated, um, we now have uh, a, a childcare center proposed for our ground floor. Um, in this five thousand square foot area of the ground floor, we have a co-work space that is a residential amenity space for the tenants upstairs. Um, we're providing parking for thirty-five bicycles. And then we have a gym that is accessed off of the existing lobby lounge area. Um, with a new package room, the gym, and then our pickleball court, which will be um, indoors. It will be beneath um, the uh, so above the pickleball court is exterior um, space. It will be a second floor, outdoor uh, roof deck. Um, so any noise, we also have a very uh, hefty eight-inch slab um, as a podium here for this level. So our sound will be able to be contained um, and not uh, disrupt any of our residential units. Um, let's see, go to this typical upper floor plan. Uh, again, we have seventy units. We have uh, one, two, three, we have four studios on a floor. Uh, we have two, three, four, we have five one-bedrooms on a floor and one uh, two-bedroom unit on a floor um, here in this corner. Um, so you can see from this plan that um, we've just continued the existing corridor in um, in the existing building. And we now are able to uh, create these additional seventy units while utilizing our existing infrastructure. Um, this is the uh, the roof deck I was discussing earlier about the pickleball court beneath. Um, and another interesting fact of this is um, my client has constructed um, a similar building on Garabrant Street, which backs up to uh, this building um, exactly. And we were able to set the elevation of this roof deck um, the same as it is a Garabrant. And so um, the idea is that we create sort of a um, community of people who get to share amenities across the buildings um, as additional amenities. So um, this is just the, this, the eighth floor has a, a different uh, plan where we have a utility room on the, on the top floor that um, will take up the space of one of the other uh, units. And so this unit here ends up being a, a one-bedroom with a den. Um, we have no roof deck amenities proposed. Um, we have a really great roof deck here on the existing one-thirty monitor building. And um, I believe that uh, my client is considering um, solar panels to adorn the roof of, of this building. Or this addition to the building, I should say. So here we have the um, uh, the visual assessment. You can see, as I was speaking earlier, this is the Garabrant Building. Um, this is the finished uh, one-thirty monitor. Um, this building has been demolished and so our addition will be occupying this space right here. Um, and these are the different views looking um, from Johnson Avenue. And I've shown here sort of massing of what the addition would look like um, in relation to the buildings next door. And you can see here that the decks would be coplanar. So, this is our front elevation. Um, this is the building that's been completed. Uh, this is the addition. The main entrance to the building will stay the same. Um, and these uh, entrances here are for um, this is a, a separate entrance for the uh, bike parking, uh, as well as access to the coworking space from the street. Um, this is the entrance to the um, to the, to the childcare. Uh, then we have the transformer room, our electric room and our egress. Um, this is the detail of uh, of the facade articulation that um, is exactly the same uh, as its neighbor. Um, we are just making it bigger. Um, and this is the rear elevation showing the same treatment. Um, these are the colors that are this, this is the uh, picture of our existing uh, completed building. The colors we are proposing are the same. I believe I have here a colored elevation showing um, how we will um, continue the elevation while it will be articulated slightly differently. It still creates uh, a nice rhythm of uh, continuing down uh, Monitor Street. And I believe that concludes my testimony.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Palermo. Um, I, I have no questions. My biggest question was uh, where is the pickleball court located? Because uh, Santo, I don't know if you're aware, your, your neighboring town there of Ridgewood, but they're having a, an absolute meltdown over the noise of rackets, apparently. Um, so.
Very familiar with the pickleball craze.
Amazing. Um, yeah, I have no questions. So uh, anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. Do you mention of sharing the amenities on the roof? Uh, from the, that we have the same elevations, but they will be going, they'll be able to go into the other building and use the amenities. They're not crossing over the rooftop, right?
No, no, the, just the, at the, at the second floor, there's uh, the first, the ground floor takes up the whole property. And then at the second floor, the building is stepped back twenty-five feet for our setbacks. And so that creates a, a, a second floor roof deck, for lack of a better word. Um, that is continue, contiguous with uh, the building next door.
And then they could share, they could cross back and forth or they go into that part of the building?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, anybody else?
Any other questions? Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Palermo. We appreciate it.
Oh, my pleasure.
Okay, so that, yeah, that would complete our presentation. And I know for a record that we did receive Mr. Ward's uh, planner's uh, staff report. And we would uh, uh, agree to his conditions of approval if this were uh, approved tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you, Council. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, press star nine. I see one hand up.
Moted Steve Herrick.
Hi Steve, I see you.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. And I hear you. I wanna swear in before you speak. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Yeah, uh, Steven with a V, Herrick, H E R R I C K. And I live at one, one-four Monitor Street.
Thank you.
Mr. Herrick, good evening, sir. We have three minutes for you.
Okay, um, yeah, I don't, I'm not speaking in terms of objecting to the, the plan. I just, I have questions more about uh, the construction phase, um, given that I'm just two, two doors down. Uh, and my neighbor at one sixteen, I'm sure has concerns too, just in terms of, I'm assuming there'll be pile driving uh, for this new construction. And so I just sort of wanted to know if there's uh, a pile driving site plan? And, and how many piles are we, are we talking about and how far from one sixteen? We have a building that um, has had, um, they did pile driving just nearby over on Johnston Avenue on the corner because they're doing new construction there. Um, it's been quite a bit of vibration, so I'm, I'm sure, and this will be a little bit closer. So uh, just uh, wanting to get a sense of, you know, how, the impact of that. And uh, yeah, also, I mean, it's gonna, is there gonna be any excavation below grade? Uh, how far down? Are they gonna be doing any underpinning of the foundation at, at one sixteen? Uh, I just don't wanna, you know, incur any damage to the adjacent property. So that, that's just another question I have and maybe the architect can address that. Um, also, is there, I didn't, there was no mention of any low-income housing as part of this plan? Is there any set aside for some low-income housing units on this site?
So, no, there's, there's no affordable housing as part of this project, um, because it says it's right. Um, I'll let uh, Jennifer uh, address your, your questions regarding the piling. I believe, Jennifer, these are helical piles?
Yeah, so we um, we're very sensitive to the uh, impact we will have on our neighbors. Um, and we are working with the general contractor to um, make sure that we use the um, least um, uh, effect. That's the word I'm looking for. The uh, so we're looking at helical piles and augers that are really more of a sort of a drilling type of pile as opposed to an impact pile. Um, and you know, that would certainly go a long way to minimize any effect that you would, you would experience. My client is open to um, communication uh, during all phases of the construction. And um, is likes to be a good neighbor and um, will absolutely um, be happy to be in contact with you during the process.
And I would add that typically, um, what, what the developer will do, and I, I know, and my client here is, is uh, very experienced in, in the neighborhood, would go and, and um, uh, coordinate a survey of your property. Uh, meaning not, not a property survey, but go in and, and document everything inside your house before we start. And that's for the benefit of you as well as the developer to, to see, you know, if any conditions change. Everybody knows that and, and we can address it right away.
Hmm, yeah, that was done for the, the new construction on Johnston Avenue right here, just a few doors down from me. So I appreciate that. Um, I guess, uh, well, a couple of the questions real quick is um, uh, is there a timeline that's projected for, for when this project will start? We have a lot of construction happening right nearby. We've got just the one in the corner as well as across on the south side of uh, Johnston Avenue. Um, there's uh, just, just uh, uh, west of uh, Monitor Street, there's a pretty large building going up. Uh, so there's a lot of construction vehicles in the area and I'm wondering if there's any thought of like, where are you gonna have a staging area for all these vehicles? Because this street is sort of like overrun with construction vehicles. And I've sometimes had been trapped in my driveway because they block my driveway. So I'm just concerned about multiple new construction projects happening at the same time.
Uh, Mr. Herrick, any other questions that uh, we can get answered for you? Just uh, in a matter of time, let's get all your questions listed.
Yeah, I guess the only other one maybe has to do with uh, shadow. I mean, I looked at the shadow study. I think since it's the north, to the north of my property, I don't think it's gonna have a huge impact as opposed to if it was to the south and east. Um, I'm more concerned about living in a canyon over the long term, um, with the potential new construction on the corner of Garabrant and uh, Johnston. Um, hopefully the buildings on Johnston Avenue remain intact over the long term.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Um, so Council, is there a timeline?
I, I believe my, my client's hoping to start construction in the middle of the first quarter of uh, twenty twenty-four. So um, you know, he wants to mobilize, you know, rather quickly. And um, I don't know what, what specifically, you know, the staging uh, plan. I don't know if Jennifer has, has uh, information on that, but it, it would be similar. He's, it's the same G C as, as, as um, uh, that built uh, the other two buildings um, on Garabrant and, and at the end of Monitor Street. So it will be, you know, similar operations.
Mr. Harrington, we just ask obviously that you get Mr. Herrick's contact information passed along to your client and uh, you know, as best you can in, in keeping with uh, the good neighbor approach. Reach out to him and, and provide him with, with some information, obviously.
Absolutely.
Uh, I could also offer that um, the, the property across the street at one twenty-five monitor, the distort building, um, is I believe now currently um, under the control of the city. And um, we could certainly try to request uh, some access to that to allow us to get some of our staging off the street to be good neighbors under the redevelopment agency.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Palermo. Um, Council, this has no bearing on the application tonight, but who is uh, who's your developer there?
It's uh, John Fiorito.
Okay.
Mr. Fioro, Fiorito's already developed the uh, the Baker Building and then, and the two adjacent buildings.
Okay, um, yeah, I just, listen, you never stop learning. I've never seen a, a helical pile. So I'm very interested. But uh, yeah, I'll reach out. Okay, so we're in public comment right now. Anybody else from the public, if you'd like to comment? Please raise your hands and uh, if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hands.
Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public?
Sir, yeah.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Matthew, I'm sorry, not Matthew. I, I jumped ahead. Matt, this is still yours.
Sure, I go by Matthew too, don't worry.
I'm trying to separate as much as I can, so.
I know, it doesn't help you guys. I'm sorry about that. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure um, that uh, I appreciate uh, Mr. Harrington putting on the record that uh, they will comply with staff conditions. I just wanted to put on the record, we do have a version two staff memo here, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And just the only other thing that I would add to that, um, after uh, I think I picked up one drawing set that might not have been updated. Um, uh, taking out the uh, the former loading uh, bay on this addition. So just make sure that we update the, the plans and we have a consistent and coherent uh, drawing set uh, for the approval as proposed. This is an addition in the TOD North Zone. Uh, this is kind of unique to see. And they are proposing an application that has no uh, variances on this very unusual through lot. Um, staff recommends approval.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two three dash zero 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 four as presented to the board tonight.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Okay, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Doctor, we can't hear you.
Okay, I heard aye. Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor unto a motion to approve with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, Mike, let's get you a break. It's nine twenty-three, we'll be back at nine twenty-eight, everybody, thank you. All right, let's come to order again, please, everybody. And we'll call item nineteen is case P two zero two three dash zero zero one six is a minor site plan for one thirty-five Monticello Ave.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Stephen Joseph for the applicant. I see Carolyn raising her hand if we can get her promoted, and I think Raul, our architect, is already promoted. This is a notice application. Can we confirm we have notices, please?
Thank you, counsel. I'm in receipt of affidavit publication proof of mailing for one thirty-five Monticello Avenue here in the city. It does appear to be in order, so chairman, we can go ahead and mark it as A one for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Wonderful, thank you so much. So one thirty-five Monticello, this is located in zone one of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. What the applicant's proposing here is a four-story mixed-use building, commercial on part of the ground floor and second floor, and two dwelling units above the second floor. In order to accomplish this, we do need minor site plan approval with a C variance for the bulkhead height. Typically, this wouldn't be a notice application, but because we have that C variance for the bulkhead height, which brings the elevator to the roof deck, we, we did need to notice, and we do have planning testimony surrounding that, so let's get Raul sworn in and have him testify about the plans.
Hi, Raul. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you please state your name?
Sure, Raul Cabato, C A B A T O.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabato, good evening. Your license is current tonight in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, sir, still current.
All right, thank you, you're qualified.
Okay, let me share my screen. Can everybody see the screen?
We can, yes.
Great. Okay, so the proposed product shall be located in the neighborhood mixed-use district of the Jackson Hill redevelopment zone. We are proposing to demolish the existing three-story building. It's a mixed-use structure and build a new four-story forty-one-foot mixed-use structure with commercial use on the first and second floor and two individual dwelling units, one on the third floor and one on the fourth floor. The existing lot is approximately twenty twenty-two feet wide by seventy-five feet deep, having an area of approximately one thousand five hundred sixty-six point ninety-six square feet. One street tree is proposed in this area. It's located in the east part of the site of the lot, which is the only available location for the street tree. Note that the subject premises is located directly in front of an existing crosswalk, so this is the only location really that we could plant a tree. The only variance we are seeking is for the height of the elevator shaft, which is a roof appurtenance where ten feet maximum is permitted. We are requesting fourteen feet, which is the height required by our elevator company. As far as the units, the commercial units shall occupy most of the first floor back here, and the entire second floor for a total of approximately two thousand one hundred seventy-nine point forty-eight square feet. Both levels shall be accessible by the elevator, which services the entire building. Also, a fully a fully handicap accessible toilet shall be located on the first floor. The third and fourth dwelling units each shall have two bedrooms and one handicap accessible bathroom, since this is an elevator building, a kitchen and living room. Each dwelling unit shall have their own laundry appliances. Each dwelling unit shall be approximately one thousand one hundred seven point thirty-two square feet in area. The entire building shall, shall be protected by an automatic sprinkler system. We are proposing a roof deck which shall be available to both dwelling units. The roof deck shall be approximately three hundred twenty point ninety-three square feet in area. It shall be set back ten feet from the front property line and two feet from the east side property line. The elevator bulkhead shall be set back twenty-three feet eight inches from the front property line. Also proposed on the roof are, is three hundred thirty-six square feet of green roof elements back here. The green roof, the green roof elements consist of self-draining plant trays. This particular system was selected for its ease of installation, reasonable cost, and easy maintenance. The modular nature of the system ensures that replacing parts become effortless. The benefits include stormwater management, reduction of the heat island effect, reduction of energy usage, noise reduction, in addition to the visual and aesthetic benefits. The entire front facade shall be clad in a red brick, and we have a sample here on sheet A dash three zero one. The building's corners shall be wood with a white finish. The window frames and store for metal framing shall have a black finish. The lower portion of the rear shall be clad with gray stucco and the upper levels clad in fiber cement siding. Material samples and descriptions, as I, as I mentioned, as well as are, are found on sheet A dash three zero one. Finally, we also have calculations for proposed signage for the commercial space. We have non-illuminated signs, and we have shown the calculations that show that we are in compliance. It's all on sheet Z dash one zero two. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cabato, appreciate it. Yeah, I have no questions, anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
All right, let's get Carolyn sworn in.
Hi, Carolyn. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state your name, please?
It's Carolyn Wurstell, W O R S T E L L.
Thank you.
Ms. Wurstell, good evening, always a pleasure. Is your license as a planner current tonight?
It is, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Great. Good evening, everyone. So happy to see you all. This is a pretty simple application in terms of the variance. The only variance we're seeking this evening for this application relates to that rooftop appurtenance height for the elevator bulkhead. As both Stephen and Raul mentioned, we're proposing an elevator bulkhead that needs a height of fourteen feet where the Jersey City Land Development Ordnance permits a maximum bulkhead height of ten feet for building heights up to forty-five feet. The elevator bulkhead is proposed at the center of the building, which is over twenty-three feet setback from the front facade, so it more than meets the required setbacks. And it really is necessary in order to allow for ADA compliant access to the roof for both of those residential units. I think that this project granting the deviation in this case really advances versus a redevelopment plan, and that the benefits of providing and allowing the access to the roof via the elevator substantially outweighs any detriment from that additional four feet of height. Additionally, granting the deviations will advance the purpose in municipal land use law, consists with purpose A, promote an appropriate use of the property, consistent with purpose E. It has an appropriate population density with the two units in this mixed-use building. It's consistent with purpose I, a more desirable visual environment through the development of this new building on this site that has attractive brick facade. And then I think overall, you know, the project won't have any substantial impairment to the zoning planner zoning ordinance, and that it will not result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare for the granting of the deviation for the rooftop appurtenance height. And then overall, I think this project really advances numerous, is really consistent with the purposes of the neighborhood mixed-use zone, which it's in to continue the existing pattern of main streets-type commercial buildings with ground floor retail uses throughout the corridor while providing for new construction and increased housing and employment opportunities. And I think it just advances overall the redevelopment plan to reestablish Jackson Hill corridor as a vibrant neighborhood commercial district to providing a wide variety of retail amenities to the surrounding area, creation of additional employment, housing, educational, recreational, commercial, retail opportunities for residents of Jersey City, and providing increased variety and opportunity for housing types and sizes and price points. So I really think that overall this, this application and the variance can be granted, and that both the positive and negative criteria can be met.
All right, thanks, Ms. Wurstell. I have no questions, anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
That does conclude our direct testimony, Stephen.
All right, thank you, counsel. So at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hands, and if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Chair, seeing no one from the public wishing to speak on this application, I move to close.
Take it.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded, public is closed.
Matt, do you want to add anything?
Certainly, chairman. Staff substantiates and agrees with the applicant's testimony regarding the positive and negative criteria for the variance. Staff supports the granting of this variance in this case. As Ms. Wurstell mentioned, the inclusion of an elevator in this project creates housing units compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act, advancing opportunities for folks with mobility impairments to have living options here in the, on the Jackson Hill Main Street corridor. The bulkhead, aside from height, is otherwise compliant with our code, including the all-important setback requirement. Staff supports this application. I am free to answer any questions if you'd like.
All right, thank you.
For the, yeah, I'm sorry, for the, just for the record, applicant is receipt of the staff report dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. There are six conditions, standard conditions in the report, and the applicant does agree to those conditions. I also just want to say, this is my first time working with Matt on a project in Jersey City. We got approved, and it was excellent experience. Matt made a lot of really great suggestions for changing and modifying the project. We had a great time, he's a good addition.
That's great, great to hear. Matt, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you for the kind words.
All right, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Dear Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two three dash zero zero one six as presented to the board tonight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval?
Great. I'll take Raul.
Please.
Vice Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Excuse me, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez, my apologies. Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Cruz.
David, we can't hear you.
Are you hearing me now? Hold on. You hear me now?
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I think the the case for the variance is there uh opening up to. You know, ADA units is uh is a great addition to the neighborhood, so I'm gonna vote I.
Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, let's move on to item twenty is case P two, zero, two, three. Dash zero, zero, six, seven. Uh, this is for the review and discussion of amendments to the Newport redevelopment plan. And Harpsmith Cove Station redevelopment plan regarding. Plan boundaries, permitted uses and other standards, uh, changes to Harpsmith Cove Station are limited to boundary change. Uh, this was petitioned by Newport Associates Development Company and this is uh. This was referred to us by city council. Under resolution two, three dash six, seven, six, formal action may be taken tonight.
All right, I'm just gonna do a short introduction before uh handing it over to, uh, I believe, Adam Fiala. Uh, with the petitioner's team. Uh, we staff did notice for this amendment. Uh, we sent notice to the county. Uh, the county representative for the planning board, um, Kevin Force and the the clerk for Hoboken. Uh, as it is uh within two hundred feet from the municipal border. Uh, we'd just like to uh. Have uh council take a look at that.
Yeah, and Matt could have an opportunity to review it. Uh, let's just go ahead and mark it as A one for the record.
All right.
And with that, I'll just had it. I'll um probably be speaking later, but I'll hand it over to Adam.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Adam Fiala of Sales, Commerce and Gross. We are the attorneys for Newport Associates Development Company, which submitted an application for proposed amendments to the Newport redevelopment plan. The amendments allow more permissive uses and parking standards to modernize the standards in the redevelopment plan and encourage the development of the redevelopment area. This will also allow the applicants to be able to build a pedestrian plaza in the future, although the plaza is not part of the proposed amendments right now. The applicant sought these changes in the aftermath of the master plan revisions. The city had a Herculean effort with its master plan reexamination in land use element. There were some conversations of the mall potentially closing. And while the redevelopment plan does not necessarily say that it will. This amendment will send a clear message to potential tenants that the mall is not closing, vacating or otherwise going away. In fact, the mall is thriving and continues to be a place that the residents of Jersey City City gather. The proposed amendments also include, as mentioned uh by the chairman. A boundary change to both the Newport redevelopment plan and the Harpsmith Cove Station redevelopment plan. To more accurately reflect the current conditions of the streetscape. And as mentioned, the substance, the actual substantive provisions of the Harpsmith Cove Station redevelopment plan is not proposed to change. The applicant has met with the city planning staff multiple times, starting, I believe, in April. And after formally submitting the proposed amendments in June, the applicant continued to meet with the planning staff and revise the terms and language of the redevelopment plan. The city council moved the matter forward on September fifth. We're here tonight seeking a recommendation from the planning board that the proposed amendments are consistent with the master plan. Pursuant to the uh requirements of the local redevelopment and housing law. The applicant submitted a memorandum from its planner dated October twenty fifth, which details how the proposed amendments are consistent with the master plan. The city's planning staff issued a memo dated November third, which concludes that uh with the recommended floor amendment, which we will get to later. The uh staff finds that the proposed text was acceptable and consistent with the master plan. So we have a professional planner here today to testify as to the consistency of the proposed amendments with the. Jersey City Master Plan. And at this time, I'd like to call Charles Height of Tresner Robin.
So Chairman, just before we turn it over to Mr. Height, uh. I think counsel's remarks were very appropriate in terms of what is being petitioned or asked of the board this evening. As the board is aware and for those. Members of the public in attendance. This is a request for amendments to a redevelopment plan under the law. Whenever a amendment to a redevelopment plan takes place, first and foremost, uh. That's something that only the governing body can do. They are the only ones that have the. Power and authority to actually amend a redevelopment plan, but in order for them to do that. They do have to send it to this body. To hear whether or not that amendment is consistent with the master plan. It is not an application, it is not a site plan review. Nothing is being proposed. It is a proposed amendment to. The redevelopment plan. Uh, and a recommendation to the council as to whether or not. The proposed amendments are consistent with the master plan. And as I have told this body in the past and for those members of the public in attendance. The governing body can move forward, even if this body were to find. That it is not consistent with the master plan. The governing body has the ability to choose to overrule this board's recommendation and adopt. The amendments as they see fit, so uh it is advisory. And with that, if we can have Mr. Height's testimony and if Mr. Height. Could really focus in on the consistency, what the proposed changes are. And how they are consistent with the master plan, it will very much be appreciated, help guide this body.
All right, thank you, counsel. And just for the record, uh, Mr. Height has already been sworn in and qualified. He's still under oath, and if you could just uh. Admit that you're still under oath, that you know that.
I do recognize I am still under oath, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Height, go ahead.
All right, um, so we thought it might just be helpful to quickly share the the boundary because a lot of the changes are related to. The proposed boundary change. Um, so just for the board's benefit to understand. The physical nature of the changes, um, I'm gonna be sharing the. Newport boundary, um, and as we've mentioned earlier. By Mr. Fiala, the southern boundary of the Newport redevelopment plan is shared with the Harpsmith Cove Station redevelopment plan, so. Um, currently, there are several properties um on the eastern portion of the redevelopment plan that are. Split zone between both plans, so from a physical standpoint, this is where we're trying to. Um, transition the southern boundary to accommodate and have all the, all these parcels within one redevelopment plan. Uh, that being the Newport redevelopment plan, so um, this is what it looks like today, um, with this southern boundary coming straight across. Um, and to acknowledge the the properties and the streetscape. Uh, we're looking to accommodate a more southerly boundary that jogs to accommodate the. Parcels that are are part of the Newport redevelopment plan. So that uh from a physical standpoint is one aspect of the proposed amendments. Um. Part of this process because we're dealing with. Land changing from one redevelopment plan to another. We did uh coordinate with the um city planning department um to confirm that. The metrics um with respect to density, FAR and open space are in kind, one for one. In terms of that transition, so we did go through that analysis, the board and um the public do have that evaluation. Uh, so that's, that's what we included. Um. If there are any other questions on the mapping, I'd be happy to go go through it, but um. In interest of time, that was just something we wanted to run through the board with respect to the physical boundary change.
No, I, uh, Mr. Height, I think the. The map is self explanatory, uh. Yeah, let's just get right into it then.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Height, for the uh boundary aspects. Um, and now can you uh discuss why the proposed amendments, uh, the substantive amendments for the Newport redevelopment plan are consistent with Jersey City's master plan?
Yes, so just from a timing standpoint, the redevelopment plan was initially adopted in uh February of nineteen eighty five. Um, since its adoption, there was three amendments, the latest being in uh June of twenty twenty. Um, though, as uh Mr. Lampy referenced, the local redevelopment and housing law does give way to two routes to amend. Uh, the redevelopment plan, um, either by way of a finding that the proposed amendments are consistent. Um, with the redevelopment, with the master plan and master plan elements. Um, or uh, as Mr. Lampy said, um, even if they're not consistent, there are specific reasons as to why to advance. The redevelopment plan amendments, so we are working under um that threshold of the local redevelopment housing law. Under section A twelve, A dash four, B two. Um. We uh did do a relatively thorough um review of the master plan. Um, we coordinated with. Uh, city planning with respect to the specific elements that we were also uh being asked to review. Uh, so we included the bicycle master plan in terms of circulation. Um, there is also a general circulation elements uh of the master plan. Uh, and open space and resource elements of the master plan, so we did review all of those documents as well as the. Uh, two thousand twenty one master plan, which is the the city's new master plan um that we're. Seeking con- consistency with. Uh, so just to highlight a few, uh, and I do recognize that it's it's late in the evening. Um, but we did want to cover some of the consistency elements, so. Um, with respect to goals and principles of the land use element, um, we are aiming to. Um. One moment. Continue uh efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods. Uh, the proposed redevelopment plan amendments aim. Uh, are maintained uh existing land uses, so we're we're dealing with residential uses transferring from one zone to another. Um, keeping with the zoning rights adopted by the city. Uh, and to ensure the continuity of the vision of the parcels. Um, at hand by integrating compatible residential and mixed use developments into the Newport neighborhood fabric. Um, so really, it's that that part of that transition for these properties to be wholly within one redevelopment, redevelopment plan. Um, we are also uh consistent with the principle of promoting the development of a diversified economy. Um, the proposed redevelopment plan amendments substantially explain, expand and update the list of permitted uses to allow for a more diversified commercial and retail environment. Uh, to serve the growing population of the Newport and surrounding neighborhoods. Um, the expanded permitted uses uh mirror the retail and commercial mix of what is seen through much of the downtown Jersey City. Journal Hill, Jackson Hill and other mixed use corridors throughout the city. Uh, that advance the development of a diversified economy, so you'll see many of the additional uses that are being proposed. Uh, in the direct text amendments. Um, we are also furthering or consistent with uh strengthening neighborhood oriented commercial areas. Uh, again, as stated, the proposed redevelopment plan. Uh, amendments sus- substantially expand the list of permitted uses as specific to retail, commercial and recreational uses. Um, and this is all aimed at uh attracting a strong and diverse mix use, mix of commercial businesses. Um, we believe that this will uh help foster a a strong commercial core, commercial area throughout Newport. Um, within that fifteen minute neighborhood uh surrounding the 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 heart of Newport. Um, we are also uh consistent with providing flexibility that that allows for a large format retail and offices to adapt. Um, so specifically for this uh principle. The proposed amendments offer a more range of diverse uses that are compatible with existing large format envelopes. That may need to be adapted while also offering uh opportunity for future infill. Uh, of commercial floor plates that remain flexible and agile in nature to accommodate use, commercial uses at varying scales. So we did contemplate a variety of uses, not only for small ground floor commercial spaces, but are also larger footprints. Um, and that flexibility in between. Um, we are also improving open space assets and connect them to each other and into the community. Um, we did do uh an open space inventory throughout the the redevelopment plan and incorporated some of the findings into the amendment. Uh, open space incorporated throughout the Newport redevelopment plan will have the greatest utilization, giving the accessibility for existing and future residents. So again, we are transitioning uh residential uses from Harpsmith Cove into Newport, so the added future residential base. Um, will likely benefit from the existing and future required open space. Uh, in addition, the amendment proposes an increase in open space requirements. Currently, the Newport redevelopment plan um requires a minimum ten percent where we elected to propose a commitment of fifteen percent. So that's an increase um with respect to that requirement. Uh, increasing the capacity of overall open space and reinforces, which reinforces a better connected network through the neighborhood. Another principle of the twenty twenty one master plan. Is with respect to upgrading community fills facilities and infrastructure to accommodate population growth. And address changing needs and ensure that major institutions can continue to thrive. The proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan expand potential for future commercial and mixed use infill, in turn, providing for a more viable and adaptable future. Um, this also includes um the relationship to the Newport Center Shopping Mall, um, which is a valuable asset in the neighborhood. Um, and the residents of Jersey City, um, with significant employment opportunities and access to essential resource services. Uh, with, which is envisioned um within the the fifteen minute neighborhood uh surrounding the Newport area. Um, we are also consistent with the principle of undertaking zoning revisions to consolidate districts, clarify regulations and. Address current issues. Uh, this is a very um apropos uh purpose of of the land use settlement. Um, we are essentially uh going through that process with this amendment. The proposed amendments resolve existing issues related to. Multiple split zone parcels by adjusting the redevelopment area boundary to consolidate, consolidate the existing zoning rights. For said parcels under one plan. The amendment, the map amendment maintains the scale and intent of the original zoning rights while offering the affected parcels. Of a path forward for cohesive development um in, under one set of zoning requirements. Um, so with that, um, I do want to confirm that we are, we did specifically evaluate um the properties. Uh, with respect to the book, um, the boundary uh amendment, um, including block seven, three, oh, two, lots fifty two, fifty four. Fifty five point oh one, fifty five point oh two, fifty six and forty three point oh one. Um, we took careful time to assess uh the proportion of each of these properties that was in Harpsmith's Cove. And transitioning into Newport, um, they were really the the fact, the the square footage of each of these properties was really a common metric. Used in that uh, that evaluation.
Um, I, Mr. Height, I I want to move now to the uh planning staff memo dated November third. Did you have a chance to review that memo?
Yes, I did.
And the planning staff recommended a floor amendment to change the terms may not to shall not when discussing the the residential floor area in the commercial office district and the waterfront commercial district. Can you discuss this floor amendment and whether that affects the master plan consistency if this change is made or if it's not made?
Yes, we we did review the the comment. Um, as it stands, it it, as you said, it it uh is a requirement that. Um, says that the residential floor area may not uh exceed commercial office, commercial area in the commercial office district. Um, so that requirement, as I read it, um, is uh appropriate and clear in terms of the intent. Uh, and the specific aspects of the requirement. Um, I also will say that it doesn't change um whether the applicant's uh amendments with respect to the boundary, the uses. Um, and other aspects of the amendments are consistent with the master plan, so it it it's not critical. That that floor amendment be incorporated into this uh overall amendment. Um. And the floor amendment is actually distinct from um the other elements of the the applicant or the petitioner's amendments.
So uh, that concludes our direct testimony. I just have a very brief summation after any um, any questions.
Um.
Matt, I think you wanted to speak as well. Do you want to jump in here or do you want to?
Sure. Information. So I think the uh item regarding the staff memo that I speak to and I'll. And I'll. Bring more uh focus to it because it it seems to not be. Covered very well yet, but it is in furtherance of the master plan goal to undertake zoning revisions to consolidate districts. Clarify regulations and address current issues. Um, that's exactly what we're speaking to in the staff memo. Uh, so the scope of this amendments are largely focused on expanding the list of permitted uses in the Newport redevelopment plan. And master plan consistency memo was prepared and we just heard testimony to it. Staff recommends that the board incorporate a floor amendment to the text ahead of making any motion to recommend adoption of the amendment. Staff recommends that the board incorporate a floor amendment to the text ahead of making any motion to recommend adoption of the amendment. And lead up to the scheduling of the amendment before the planning board, the petitioner had proposed striking the following clauses from uh the development requirements and regulation section of the commercial office district and the waterfront commercial district. Um and I quote, residential development may be included with or may follow commercial development, but may not exceed the gross floor area of commercial space so developed. That's in the commercial office district and very similar. The residential development may be included with or may follow commercial development, but may not exceed one half of the gross floor area so developed. And that is the standard in the waterfront commercial district. Although these two standards are worded slightly different, these two clauses has have the same effect. These clauses prohibit residential floor area in these respective districts from exceeding the amount of commercial floor area. The usage of may not is a requirement rather than a recommendation. And any residential floor area area in excess of the requirements would not be cognizable by the planning board as it would constitute a D four variance. Amendment to or removal of these clauses in the opinion of staff would trigger the inclusionary zoning ordinance. Uh as as reviewed and as proposed, this application, this amendment doesn't trigger the inclusionary zones, but the omission of these clauses would. So they remain, but in furtherance of clarifying the regulation, we recommend changing the language may not to shall not to remove any ambiguity or am ambiguity over the app applicability or future enforcement of those standards.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Yeah, I agree. Um. You know, shall and may are always a big thing for me. I I'd rather things be black and white um with no guesswork whatsoever. So I I would entertain a floor amendment changing that language. Um. Anybody else? Any questions for Matt?
A question. I mean, I don't know. Uh. So I was concerned that when I see this new element plan um has been brought up in the past on this board on Newport, um open space area. Any changes in this to the master plan that open space area on the waterfront side have no access, private access. Um. Uh it's I. Not sure if I'm on here, but I'm just concerned about that that um we've taken up. And. Open. There is a Newport would have access to everybody from that city. That's gonna be the same.
Are you asking that of of me, uh commissioner?
Next that a bad or I'm asking that of um.
Yeah, there there's nothing uh on the waterfront side that's being changed in the open space, and we're not reducing the open space requirement um anywhere uh over there. Uh in the residential district, the open space requirement is actually being increased. So I think that I think that.
It was a with a um. Hi, Mister Height brought it up, the open space area of the element, and that's why it should be to make sure that it was cleared, anything on the waterfront side over there. Always have access to everybody in Jersey City and not.
Understood. Yeah.
Just the answer is we're not restricting any access to the waterfront by any of the changes. That's the question, correct, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Correct. We are not. We're not, we're not restricting any type of access there. Correct.
The Hudson waterfront walkway as designated by the D P is still um in place, so that that will be coordinated as future developments come online for this area.
And just as far as far as the floor amendment, Matt, we're proposing changing what was may not to shall not.
That's correct.
So as it's written right now, it's may not.
Yes, and we and we're of the opinion that as a may not, cuz that sentence could be written just as may, but because of the fact that it says may not, it is to be interpreted and applied as a shall not. Um but because of our normal usage, we wanna change it to shall not. Um and we just, in lead up to this amendment being finalized and pencils down, uh there was disagreement over that small change. So that's why I incorporated in a memo and provided it to the commissioners for their review.
We are.
Right. So I guess it wasn't being proposed to be changed cuz that was the language existing in the redevelopment plan. But in looking at it, its planning's position that it should be changed because it makes the intent clearer uh from planning's perspective.
Right. And our our position is that it it was clear and unambiguous before, and the change is not necessary. Um it's not. Um it won't change whether this um these amendments overall are consistent with the master plan.
So counsel, would you be opposed to that change?
We we're not opposed to it. No, we we are not proposing it and uh don't think it's necessary, but we're not opposed to it.
Okay, understood.
Counsel, do you believe that as written, it provides more flexibility to you in that the way planning would like it to be rewritten, it kind of solidifies it?
No, I don't think it's any different. I don't think it's any different. I think it's the same. I I don't think it's changing the requirement. That's why we don't believe it's necessary. I'm not sure if there's any additional flexibility one way or the other.
Well, if if we're changing the language in the plan, you know, now would be the time to update from may to shall. As far as I'm concerned, it's, you know, i- it's a minor change.
Yeah, nobody's disagreeing, so.
Yeah, so I I agree with with.
I I I agree.
Yeah, I agree with Matt's. If there's no opposition to it, you know, I don't see the problem with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to add that floor amendment in.
Another thing to just expand upon, going back to the prior question from Commissioner Torres, um on page eleven of their amendment, there's a new clause that is introduced and it 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 says, all waterfront development along the Hudson River shall develop, maintain, and manage a section of the Hudson waterfront walkway coincident with the shoreline of the development property as approved by the city of Jersey City City Planning Board.
Yeah, all right.
All right. All right. Anything else, Matt?
No, that's it. Um staff recommends approval with that form.
Okay.
For a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, thank you. And counsel, uh that's your case. You've made your case?
Yes, uh I very brief summation, um just to say that, uh thank you, guys. I know it's late. I'm not gonna take long. I just want to say we're here for uh just a reminder, we're here for uh master plan consistency. And uh we put in proofs uh for as testified by our planner and stated in our planner's memo and the city's planning staff memo uh and just stated by Mister Ward right now that the proposed amendments are consistent with the master plan. So we respectfully request that the planning board issue a recommendation to the city council that the proposed amendments are consistent with the master plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, counsel. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. I see one hand raised already. If anybody from the public wants to comment on this change.
There are three, Chairman.
Okay.
Promoting Bob Garner.
And if you're calling in, please press star nine.
Hello, Bob.
Uh hi.
Hi, Bob. Are you able to turn your video on?
Start my video, yes.
I see you you did something, but I don't see you. But I appreciate the effort.
Do you have um a little slide on your met your camera?
This looks like it's software.
Hmm. Okay.
Sign in. Should I sign in?
I don't know what that means.
No, I wouldn't do that. Um what is it all right to proceed with that video? I'm fine with it.
All right, great. So yeah, Bob, instead of video, we'll just swear in. Uh do you swear any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is Bob Garner. I live at one sixty-seven and a half Cole Street.
Thank you.
All right, Mister Garner. Good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly before this board. As a trustee for the Hamilton Park Neighborhood Association, I would like to express my opposition to the proposed amendment language that suddenly leaves our residential community with a horrible helicopter landing area. That is to say, this board should not allow the curveball in section six that not so subtly changes from allowing a helicopter landing area in the general waterfront region to dropping a bomb in our immediate backyard that is the Newport redevelopment area which adjoins the unsuspecting residential downtown community. Accordingly, the corresponding lot should not be suddenly rezoned as outlined in section seven as waterfront commercial to be used as a revenue generating toy rather than part of the waterfront walkway for all to enjoy. You see, our community is already chock full of helicopter landing sites of all shapes and sizes. Just a short, pleasant ferry ride away are several heliports, including the one at three thirty-five twelfth street next to the High Line, the East Thirty-Fourth Street heliport, as well as the most famous downtown Manhattan heliport, not to mention the several nearby sites located in our garden state. Yes, this area is already loaded with places for the likes of the Donald and Melania to land. All of these, I must mention, are in non-residential areas. I'm gonna repeat that, non-residential areas. Many residents have long since noticed the onsite glorious plated sign regarding the Newport Helistop as well as the accompanying beautiful website, Newporthelistop.com that has for several months included weather conditions and such. One must readily admire the arrogance involved here, evidently seeing this planning board as a mere nuisance or a motley group that's already bought and paid for. In closing, if this proposed amendment is not a done deal, I wish to express that as New York City has largely successfully kept heliports from residential areas, this board should strive to do as well for the citizens of Jersey City. Subsection J of section six before this board pays mere lip service to the Hudson River waterfront walkway, but actually using this lot as an active and passive recreation spot surrounded by the walkway could serve as a crowning jewel for Newport and Jersey City as well as a glorious starting point for the long-awaited East Coast Greenway that would benefit everyone rather than yet another ugly, loud helicopter landing area for the benefit of the Donalds and Melania.
Mister Garner.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before uh before we let you go, uh you are under oath tonight. I will remind you. Do you have any evidence of this board being bought and paid for?
I don't believe it is. I don't believe it is. I just wanna indicate that why would they put up a sign several months ago? And have a.
I'm not, sir, I'm not speaking. I'm not speaking to that. I'm I'm defending my board right now.
I'm not, I'm not saying it is. I'm saying why would they put up a sign and a website when it hasn't even gone before the board yet?
Sir, that's not, that's not before this board. So thank you for your comment. You have no evidence for the accusation lodged against the board.
I'm not making it. I'm not making.
Thank you, sir. Cameron.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a nice night, sir.
I I I just wanna make a clarification regarding the helistop. Um it actually has, uh it's been pre-existing, um and it's was part of an application back in, that was submitted back in twenty twenty. Uh and these amendments are actually uh are expressing some sensitivity to this matter. And uh they are, uh it's including a reduction in the amount of heli stops allowed, saying that there's only one permitted in all of Newport redevelopment plan area or redevelopment area.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks for the clarification. All right. Anybody else from public? I see a number of hands raised.
Lowers.
Underwood has been promoted.
Thank you. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state by your name and give us your home address, please?
Aaron Underwood, U N D E R W O O D, and I reside at two sixty-four Ninth Street in Jersey City.
Thank you.
Mister Underwood, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Thank you. I am the president of the Hamilton Park Neighborhood Association. I want to speak on three specific topics related to the amendments to the Newport redevelopment plan. The first is the topic of the helistop inverted port. The proposed amendments are capping the number of heli stops to one. However, having helicopters traveling around, over, and through a mixed-use residential, commercial, and retail area represents a real quality of life and safety concern. This is a permitted use that benefits the few and harms the many because of the noise and pollution that these helicopters force on the surrounding communities. Does this promote enhancements to the residential areas of the redevelopment plan? It is for this reason that the H P and A requests that no heli stops or verti ports be allowed in the redevelopment plan and that the language permitting those uses be struck. Second, the current language in section six subsection L regarding public access to the Pavonia Pass Station is too general and weak. The communities west of Newport have only seen their access to the pass station reduced and restricted in the last few years. The surrounding communities need guaranteed pedestrian walkways through the mall at both points of egress at Eighth and Ninth Streets. Both of these walkways should be secured and open twenty-four hours. The current twenty-four hour access is located only at the Eighth Street Egress and is not guaranteed with an easement. Therefore, the H P and A recommends that section six subsection L be amended to include both points of egress specifically and include stronger language regarding unobstructed access twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year since creating access and safe passageway through the mall is an essential part of the master plan's goals of a pedestrian-friendly city. A guarantee would make this consistent with the master plan. Lastly, the changes to the plan indicate the anticipation of increases in the number and types of permitted uses and the general increase in development of the area. Therefore, the H P and A recommends that a traffic study be conducted once a certain parking and density threshold is reached. If thousands of new units and retail entertainment uses are constructed alongside a reduction in the required parking, it will have significant impact on traffic in the area and surrounding neighborhoods, and these changes should be monitored and adapted going forward. In conclusion, the H P and A requests that the planning board take a second look at the topics of the helistop, path station access, and the reduction of parking when evaluating whether these amendments are consistent with the master plan. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you, Mister Underwood. We appreciate it.
Uh Ms. Diane Atwell is promoted.
Hey, Diane, I'll swear in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state by your name and give us your home address, please?
Diane Atwell, D I A N E, Atwell, A T W E L L. Address two nine nine Pavonia Avenue.
Thank you. Ms. Atwell, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Uh, good evening. Would like to congratulate you on your reelection.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You've done a fine job over the years. I would just like to say that I understand that this is in line with the master plan, but the devil is in the details. They are saying they're going to limit the heli port to one, which you see as a win, and yet you open the door for verti ports, unlimited number of them, which are basically things such as drone delivery. The master plan clearly states about realigning and providing access from the west in Hamilton Park Neighborhood through to the waterfront. And yet, this redevelopment plan language is. And yet this redevelopment plan language is even weaker than what it was before. I understand that there's an intent to try to introduce city bikes and walking to the area, but to wholesale allow them to simply strike out the whole sections on providing any type of parking to hotels or residents from a minimum standpoint does not seem in line with the master plan. And that doubling down on the saying that they're going to use the the parking mall parking as a double for to be counted twice towards these residents and hotels just does not seem correct to me and not in line with what the master plan is saying. The gentleman earlier tonight talked about increasing the open space from ten to fifteen percent. Great, but what I would like to see is that they allow their residents to have parties in their open space. Right now, Hamilton Park is dying because there are so many residents from Newport that come to Hamilton Park to hold a birthday party because they're not allowed to do it there, or the fees are exorbitant. So while they're providing open space, they are so controlling the use of it that residents are not using it. They do not allow farmer's market down there. The master plan needs to respond to these issues. And this redevelopment plan needs to be re- re-looked at again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Atwell. We appreciate your time. Promoted. Matt, just for the record, uh, farmers markets are now a permitted use in this plan, correct?
There's a long list of them.
Yeah.
That is correct. Uh, many of the uses that then in fact adding to this redevelopment plan fall under more broad standards that we would generally have to make an interpretation on if they made a zoning determination request. Um, but they're trying to ask for and codify um, some, you know, straightforward categories here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so if we could, let's continue with public comment. Once again, if, uh, anyone would like to comment tonight, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine.
I can't swear in. Oh, sorry, Cam. Hi Catherine. Do you swear any testimony you get tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you please state and spell your name and give us your home address?
Uh, Catherine, K.A.T.H.R.Y.N. Moore, M.O.O.R.E., uh, and one forty Bay Street.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, good evening. Always a pleasure. Uh, we have three minutes for you.
Uh, I just had just one quick question. Um, the, the folks brought it up before, but the, the verity ports, I just wanted a little more explanation to that because that, I don't know if that's something that um, the city in general allows, but that's just for the future. I just would like a little more clarification on what that entails and how different and is there noise? And is it just more of a traffic thing? I just was curious about that. That's my only question.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll leave it up to anybody here who wants to answer that.
I can speak to it. Um, I don't know if Mr. Ward wanted to. So, so a verti port, um, in concept is an area that's uh, defined to support, uh, the landing and takeoff of what's referred to as electric vertical, um, vertical takeoff and landing vehicles. So it's, it's a growing, um, type of aircraft industry, um, and it's, it's really specified around electric vertical and takeoff um, vehicles. So that's, that's a general concept. Now, it's, it's very forward thinking because it's, it's a relatively new type of aircraft. So I don't know if that answers the question, but that's, that's a general framework of it.
Um, I think we should get a little more clarification.
So that, that's for electric helicopters, correct?
Essentially, yes. Yeah, anything, I wouldn't call them helicopters. That's the, an older term, but yes, it's similar analogy.
So these carry passengers?
Uh, in, in time, they can. I don't know if there's any, uh, electric fleets of helicopters. Um, I think more commonly it's, it's used to transport goods and, goods and things like that on delivery, but, um, in, in time, I think with, with the industry as it grows, it could possibly expand to that.
Uh, as of the news yesterday, there was no electric helicopters. Process being done maybe for deliveries or a drone, but but I watched on news yesterday and saw that, that there is no passage. Um, developed, yeah.
I, I just take pauses defining it so loosely at this point. If, if it turns into a passenger helicopter, we'll call it for tonight. Um, you know, I, I think we should know that and have that information before we just approve the ports everywhere.
I agree.
Well, a major difference is a heliport. I mean, they're essentially the same, except that a heliport allows for refueling, storing, maintaining of craft, whereas a verti point doesn't. Just a touchdown, touch and go.
Yep. That's accurate.
Or it could be a drone, but they're not to do anything other than take a break or to drop off or pick up.
Is there any, uh, we don't know that yet though. They're not, not very charging of, you know, recharging them up if it's like might not be refueling, but it's the same thing if it's recharging. Same, same concept.
Well, then it wouldn't be a verti port. But that's splitting the hairs. I mean, the bottom line, I think, is that um, you know, this heliport, I think I heard Matt said it is pre-approval. My question is, I mean, Diane Atwell has been on a number of, uh, uh, community meetings to offset a lot of the disruption from helicopters to our community. I mean, I know from personal experience, living on the seventeenth floor in Toronto Square area, how inconvenient it was. Um, so let me, I mean, so Matt, with regard to the heliport, does it allow for um, recreation or for tourism, you know, stops? Sort of like the heliport over in Carney, or is it just for medical, media, and corporate use? Security or?
There's, there's language like that, I believe, in the the standards that are, uh, let's see here. In section six, there in that, the chapter that speaks to land use, I believe that it's insinuating that it's more for business travel. Um, but there is nothing in the plan that, that specifies it further than, um, like a loose loose language that speaks to that, um, because it's relating to other land uses, um, which, uh, tourism is not a specific land use, uh, I would say. Um, it's more of a commercial activity. So I'm, I'm not sure if there's a, a clear answer on that. I do believe that verti ports are controlled by the Federal Aviation Administration. Um, but I do not know if there's, there's no further language beyond what, what they intend to use it for, um, in their proposed language.
We do not intend to use it for tourism. Um, that, there's no intention to use either of these uses for tourism and the, um, the verti port is a really a more cleaner, uh, efficient way to move people around and it's really more for the, for the future. Um, and, uh, for the future of the electric heli, well, maybe they're not technically helicopters, but electric helicopters for shorthand. It's, that's where the future is going. And, and they will be quieter.
So it sounds, and I understanding is, as you're saying, is that this thing won't be used until evolves, become or um, electric helicopter?
That, that's the, um, that's the verti port, correct? And then the heliport, there is a heliport that exists today and a language that is being done there in the amendment is restricting it more. It's, it's only one heliport is permitted for the entire redevelopment, uh, area. And while um, it has it allowed in multiple districts, each of those districts are along the waterfront, and then there's the language that says the entire redevelopment area, only one heliport is permitted.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, I think we've been throwing out the word heliport, but where it's actually heli stop in the, in the language. Um, so it, it, that would be of a, like a lesser intensity than a heliport.
Okay, so if tourism isn't the intended use, are we comfortable putting that language in the plan?
Well, I like Mr. Faiella's suggestion, or it was Matt's about, uh, commercial. If, you know, uh, uh, because, uh, the, I mean, the community that I've heard in my experiences, commercial could be problemsome. I mean, if it's, you know, something other than, you know, military, news, medical. Uh, is that, did I hear you correctly, Mr. Faiella?
I, I believe so. The, the intent is not to use it for tourism. That's, that's what I had said previously. I think that's consistent with what you had just said, I hope.
Well, Chairman, I'm not sure anybody knows how they're going to be used because I'm not sure they're in use and if the FAA has started regulating. So I am sure that you have to get some kind of FAA clearance. And then the question becomes obviously, how many are you even permitted in a certain radius, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, you know, we're talking about permitting a use that is futuristic and future-thinking. And I don't know that any of the full-on regulations are in place yet. The technology is in place. My understanding of these is that the hope, so to speak, is we're going to get to a point where you go up on the roof of a building and you get in one of these almost like a taxi and it building hops to the other side of, of town. Uh, you know, not long distance traveling, but really quick, short distances. I don't know that that's ever going to happen. I'm, I'm envisioning the Jetsons, right? Uh, we gotta get through the FAA with all of that. So.
Yeah.
Question is, is it something that we want to allow that's somewhat a new idea and term? There's going to be further regulation that goes into this well beyond this board and you know, our jurisdiction. It's gonna, it's gonna be the FAA that's going to determine a lot of this.
Uh, agreed, but why put the use in there when we don't know what those regulations are yet?
That's the question. I'm just trying to provide that info.
Sure.
The FAA can't regulate what a municipality or a county or state does with its property.
Yeah.
It, it can regulate what happens in the air.
Well, it regulates what happens in the air. So if you have, you, you can't have the, the verti port not be able to lift up off the ground. Uh, the FAA doesn't allow you to, right?
No, but to your point, let's just use the heliport in Carney, uh, the FAA is there and
Right.
We got, the only way we got any relief has been dealing with the owner of the heliport and the owner of the, uh, helicopter companies to try to, uh, mitigate all the noise and pollution. The FAA then has been useless. And we petition congressmen and senators' offices. So anyway, long story, I don't want to belabor this. All I'm saying is, is if Mr. Faiella was saying, we want to work with him, is saying, end the community and saying, hey, look, you know, if this is the master plan, and Matt, I think you're saying is it's limited to one? And I don't, you know, is that, and that's the case?
Uh, heli stops are limited to one. Verti ports are not similarly limited or specified by saying that they cannot be used for tourism.
Okay, but the heli stop
is limited.
Or it's limited to commercial?
It, it doesn't, it's not very specific. It just limits it to one in the plan area.
Maybe this particular.
There's counsel's testimony that the intent isn't tourism. Correct, counsel?
Correct.
Okay, so why not put that in there that it's tourism is excluded?
That's perfectly fine.
And would you want that same specification for verti ports?
Yes, that, that's fine as well.
Is there, is, so just so I could be clear on that. So we say no tourism, but business-wise, people come uh, is there, is the heli stops doing that now or is it? Was, am I, am I, are that two different things or is that the same thing?
Well, uh, it, it's the same. Well, good question. I mean, from my experiences, when we worked with the company and had the, um, helicopter routes altered, except for military, medical, and media, uh, the three Ms. Uh, my experience on the seventeenth floor, I no longer feel like a, a victim of paparazzi with these helicopters coming at a hundred and thirty, hundred and forty feet off the ground. If they come once every two weeks or something, it's about right. I don't, I don't feel like I'm bombarded before when we had all the tourism, uh, you know, it was horrible. So. No, I don't know if that completely speaks to Diane's or, I don't live in Hamilton Park, but I think that that's certainly moves in uh, a very good, uh, direction.
Yeah, I think, I think we definitely should limit tourism in both uses. Um.
It sounds like the petitioner has already agreed to that.
Yeah. Okay, so if, if everybody's I'm sorry, somebody started to speak there.
I, I just said, uh, we, we still have some public, our hands raised.
Yeah. Yeah, that's where I was getting to next, if we could. Let's continue on with public comment, please.
Eduardo Nunez has been promoted.
Hello?
Hello, Eduardo. Are you able to turn your video on?
Good evening.
I'm great. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Wonderful. Are you able to turn your video on?
Um, my battery's going low.
All right. All right, good. I see you. I hear you. I just want to swear in before you speak. All right, if you could raise your right hand?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is Eduardo Nunez. I live at thirty-one High Street. I, uh, work in Newport. My job title is I'm a superintendent right now. Just got promoted. It's a great job in Newport and it's a great place to work. I support the redevelopment plan of maintenance because I want my job and others like it to be available in the future.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Promoting Roger.
Hello, Roger. I just want to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you get tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
For the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Okay, so my name is Roger Vasquez, R.O.G.E.R. V.A.Z.Q.U.E.Z. My home address is four sixty Fifth Street in Hoboken, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. We have three minutes for you.
Good evening. Um, so I'll keep my statement brief. Uh, I work in Newport as a doorman slash concierge. I'm a member of the Union six-two-one, and I support this redevelopment plan amendment because Newport is a great place to work. And I want my job and others to be available in the near future. Thank you for your time, guys. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Okay, once again, we're in public comment. If anybody else wants to comment, please raise your hand. And if you're calling, you need to press star nine to raise your hand.
No public, I move to close the public.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, I'll go back to you, I guess.
Yeah, so it it seems as though we have landed a a couple of floor amendments, changing those clauses from may not to clarify them with shall not. And to uh, limit vertiports and the helostop um, sections where they're listed as permitted uses to exclude tourism. Uh, and the final formation of that language will uh, work with the petitioner on. Uh, but that's the the goal in mind before we send it up uh, to uh, to council with hopefully a favorable recommendation from planning board. Staff recommends approval.
One thing is Mr. Underwood also mentioned about accessibility to path. I don't know if that's something that Council Faiella might be able to speak to or.
Uh, we can, um, I'd like to bring up, uh, Mr. Hay again to discuss the accessibility, the access, uh, real briefly and just how this these amendments enable the um, the next steps of uh, of the access and how it will allow it to thrive and uh, and keep the access.
Thank you.
So Charles, there you go.
So thank you. So um, there there's, I guess, two two contexts that we can answer that. Uh, one in terms of circulation. Um, there are many different pathways through the Newport area with respect to pedestrian, bicycle. Um, the the pass station is obviously a a regional circulation um, facility. So those have all been, um, many of those uh, circulation routes are already implemented in um, in and around the areas of Newport, along Washington Boulevard and things like that. There also is uh, the the aspect of um, increasing the land uses um, and different areas uh, to accommodate uh, more of a pedestrian um, connection uh, across the overall uh, districts. So the variety of land uses will just encourage more active um, pedestrian activity. So um, with respect to uh, the Newport Pass Station, um, in terms of of hours, I I I don't know any, I'm not aware of the limitation on hours. I think that was a comment raised. Um, but I do know from uh, a connectivity point, uh, the Newport Newport Pass Station is is a node um, that all the um, circulation routes are designed to uh, pass and either start and or pass um, to make those connections. So we did take a look at that.
Yeah, as well as the light rail. I mean, so I think if I understood Mr. Underwood. I mean, it it's the hours and I get, you know, staffing cost money or security measures, and I don't know what they are. But I think, you know, how great it is down there, and pardon, I have a sore throat, but how great is down there? And you hit the nail on the head, Miss Hyde. It's a regional point. So people love coming and going. It's it's bubbling, you know, so. Um, so I don't know if there's any specific language we can add in there. It doesn't sound like we're there yet. Uh, but no, I I think that that that's a very uh, valid uh, point from somebody who's uh, a uh, a head of or a participant leader in a group downtown, so.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we can just make that recommendation to to city council in this that um, you know, we try and maintain and even expand access across to the waterfront from Hamilton Park. Um, I hesitate to put any language in right now. I think it's something that uh, Councilman Solomon's been working on for some time and um, you know, I I'm certainly not up to speed on on his fight going forward, i- if, you know, there is one. So, uh, you know, I think we can put that recommendation on record. Uh, but I hesitate to put any language in there right now.
Steph can prepare a memo that um, summarizes uh, some of those comments from commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion uh, to approve and accept uh, the review and discussion of amendments to the Newport redevelopment plan and the Harsum's Cove Station redevelopment plan regarding plan boundaries, permitted uses and other standards. Changes to Harsum's Cove Station are limited to boundary change. Uh, and to include the two floor amendments that we had uh, this evening to change the language from may not to shall not. And to limit vertiport and heliports to exclude tourism. Um, the exact language will be ironed out with planning and uh, send a favorable recommendation uh, to city council for formal adoption.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a referral, positive referral to city council.
And just to clarify the motion, wh- when we said helostop, I mean, heliports, we we were talking about helostops. Uh, okay, on a motion to uh, recommend for a city council adoption, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
So I I am going to vote aye. I I would like to give that positive recommendation um, with a comment to city council that um, you know, the verti stops aren't something that's well-defined at this point. I don't think it's been well-defined tonight. And maybe look into you know, limiting those uses until a point where we're comfortable with the technology. You know, what are they used for now? What are they used for in the future? I I think just to give a a blanket approval to unlimited vertiport. I I don't see that being the way forward. I I'm you know, I don't want to hold up progress, obviously. But um, you know, I I think those uses should be explored further uh, by city council. So again, with that, I'm going to vote aye, but uh, you know, just with a little trepidation on the uh, vertiport.
Uh, motion carries, uh, all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Point and a question. Point is, I love you, John Mayer, photo above your behind your shoulder there. Secondly, are you related to Alfaiella?
The one from Newark, not the one from Union City, is my father.
Okay, the one from Newark is the guy from Marlboro, right?
Yeah, yep, that's where I uh, was born and raised, in Marlboro.
Oh, and Steve Lipsky sends all his best.
I will. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Best wishes.
Okay, so uh, given the time, I do have an email that uh, Tom Santo Cameron, everybody's copied on here. That Mr. McCann is agreeing to carry two items. Uh, he still has one unresolved, I believe, in front of us. That is, uh, case P two zero two three P two zero two three dash zero 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 two. Uh, the preliminary and minor site plan with variances for one seventy-seven Grand Street. I don't think that's you're right.
He carried that too in a separate email.
Okay, there it is.
He carried all three.
All right, remember to open two different emails next time, Langston. All right, so uh, we'll be carrying case P two zero two three dash zero 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 two uh, to a date certain, uh, eleven twenty-eight. Uh, we're carrying case P two zero two three dash zero zero six five uh, for six fifty Grove Street to a date certain. I believe those are also to the twenty-eighth, correct, Cam? Yeah.
Yeah.
And um, case P two three, I'm sorry, P two zero two three dash zero zero six six for six fifty-nine Grove Street. That's being carried to a date certain uh, November twenty-eighth. And before we move on to memorialization of resolutions, you guys are killing me with these case numbers. Totally changed what they used to read. Um, all right, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. I believe I have eight total. Uh, resolution number one, City of Jersey City Planning Board, uh, two oh, uh, twenty twenty-four Fiscal Year Planning Board Agreement for uh, Stenographic Services. Resolution number two, the planning board of the City of Jersey City authorizing and approving the appointment of legal counsel. Resolution number three of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City authorizing and approving agreement for legal services. Number four, resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City. Uh, Planning Board Case Number P two three dash zero six nine. Applicant is Buku Culture LLC, address three ninety tunnel E F. Jersey City, New Jersey, block four six zero one. Lot forty-two, application for conditional use approval. Resolution number five of the City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of DF Jersey City Donuts Incorporated at four oh two Grand Street. Block one two six zero five, lot one. P two zero two three dash zero 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 three is an application for preliminary and final uh, site plan approval and a deviation from the Montgomery Gateway Redevelopment Plan. Resolution number six is resolution of the Planning Board of the City, uh, Board of the City of Jersey City approving an extension of minor site plan approval, applicant third street J C LLC. For extension of minor site plan approval, three fifty-one Third Street. Lot one one zero zero four. Lot four, case number P two zero two three dash zero zero five two. Resolution number seven of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City extending time to file previously approved preliminary and final major subdivision submitted by four seventeen Communipaw Oz LLC. Four seventeen Communipaw Avenue and one thirty-nine Woodward Street, block one eight nine zero one. That's twenty-three and twenty-nine. Case number P two zero two three dash zero zero four two. And number eight, city uh, resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of one two four Glenwood Holdings LLC, application number P two two dash one nine seven twenty twenty-three, application for minor site plan approval, uh, block one three two zero four, lot fifty-six.
All right, do I have a second? All right, could we have a roll call, please, Cam? Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Uh, one more time. Okay, aye. Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor to memorialize resolutions. All right, thank you, everybody. Um, I don't need an executive session. Um, I I just want to state on the record in front of the public, uh, I appreciate the support from the board and uh, all the kind words. It's it's always appreciated and uh, let's kill it in twenty twenty-four, everybody. Um, so if we could, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We are adjourned, everybody. Get to bed. Enjoy your night. Thank you, guys.
Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, man.
Thank you.